Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, December 10, 2018. Prior to the start of the meeting tonight, and preceding our roll call, I'd like to remind anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to kindly fill out a speaker request form and get that to our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, who will get it to me, and we will then get you on at the appropriate time. Also, just a reminder for anyone who wishes to speak tonight, we would like you to try to keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Sometimes we have quite a few folks who want to speak, and we can find it goes on and on, although, believe me, we want to hear from all members of the public. So, having said that, a roll call, please.
Jacobson. Finnucan.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Norae Ko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. I'm going to call upon our new acting fire chief, Jeff McMaster, to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Okay, now we begin our meeting with the approval of the agenda, and I know we do have a few changes on tonight's agenda. First of all, I'd like to suggest that we move what is on your agenda, printed, under E1, Special Items Proudly DeKalb. We're going to move that up towards the front of the meeting. We do have members of the NIU football team and staff here. We'd like them to be able to come in, because as I had expressed to them, they have a little practice to do prior to their trip to Boca Raton. So I'd like to move that up to right before our public hearings tonight. And are there any other additions, deletions, or alterations to our agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that there was another change that was proposed to the consent agenda.
Ah, yes, that was the change that you had requested, Lynn, yes.
Among others, I think?
Okay, or someone else's, that we remove the schedule of meetings from the consent agenda. The consent agenda is item F, that we remove number three, approval of the 2019 schedule of meetings. We would move that to a place for separate action. Is that correct? So that would be, let's move that, then, approval of 2019 scheduled meetings to number So that would be G8. Thank you for reminding me of that, Lynn. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, a second to approve the agenda as amended. Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norae Ko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Finnucan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. Our first item of business tonight will be something that, for the benefit of our audience and those watching TV, we try to do this each and every council meeting. It's called Proudly DeKalb. And if you look at the screen there, that's a picture of a bunch of happy Huskies. And I'd like some of those happy Huskies to come on in. Brad, would you come on in? I want you to invite, to introduce our guests. Sutton, if you'd put that trophy, is there a table right up here in front of me? Okay. Then you gentlemen, I'm going to have a seat. We're going to call, we're going to point you out a little bit here. I'm going to call right now on Associate Athletic Director Brad Hoy, who would like to introduce some very, very special guests and talk about why we are all so proudly DeKalb. Brad?
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and council members, well, obviously, proud to be here tonight. We want to thank you for the invitation to appear before the city and the council as we celebrate Mid-American Conference Championship that the Huskies won a week ago last Friday in the MAC Championship game against University of Buffalo. A thrilling come-from-behind victory. And here with us tonight is our athletic director, Associate Vice President and Director of Athletics, Sean T. Frazier, head coach Rod Carey, and two of the standout performers for the Huskies. We have defensive end Sutton Smith, who is on his way to being a consensus All-American for the second consecutive season. And then we also have starting offensive tackle Max Sharping. Max has also received a number of awards. He was a finalist for the Campbell Trophy and was in New York as recently as early last week. And then just today, he was acknowledged as a first-team cosita academic All-American, first-team, the third Husky in school history to achieve that status. So we've got some of the best of the best here. And at this time, I'd like to kind of pitch it over to Athletic Director Sean Frazier. I know he has a few words to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. First off, it was an electric evening. I can't tell you how spectacular it was to have our Huskies win the championship. And very similar, you might have heard these words, it takes a city to raise an athletic department in NIU, and I can't say how humble I am by the support that we've had from the city of DeKalb and from you, Mayor Smith, obviously, all the council members. It's been great to watch the maturation process. I've been in the region, I've been in the Cal-Sycamore for over six years now, and it's been fantastic about the level of support. But we really can't get this done. We know with the budget shortfalls and some of the things that currently happen within this great state of Illinois, that we've had some challenges. But to be able to do what we do on a consistent basis, academically and athletically, and I know we have our president, President Freeman's here, and I make sure I keep it correct here, because I have my boss in the room, but I will say this, I am so proud of this community and what we've been able to do together. So keep that in mind as you kind of go through the process. Sometimes it'll be dark, sometimes we'll have some challenges, but if we do it together, we can make it happen. And that's what happened on that fateful evening where a lot of folks decided to turn off their TVs at halftime, but didn't understand the resolve of the Huskies and what these young men and women have done and have moved us forward. So I'm going to shut up there, because I could probably stay up here for a while and talk a little bit about our Huskies, but we've got our head coach Rod Carey, and I want to make sure that he has some time to talk. But again, thank you so much for all of your support.
Thank you, Sean. Hello, Coach. How you doing?
Good. How are you, Mayor? Well, thank you for having us here today. What a treat it is to be back here. I became the head football coach about six years ago, right before the Orange Bowl, and we were fortunate enough, you know, to be here then, six years ago. So six years later, we're returning. It's a little full circle for myself. But I just want to echo a lot of what Sean said here, is that, you know, we sometimes, well, not sometimes, as a coach, you get too much credit or too much blame, right? And in this case, it's definitely too much credit, because it takes this entire community to have the program that we do, from the support like people like you, to our president, President Freeman, and Sean and the tone he sets in our athletic department. And that helps us, as coaches, set the tone for our players. And what two terrific players we have right here, I could brag on these two all night, and I'm going a little bit right now. Max is a guy who came to us five years ago, is 260 pounds, and as he sits in that chair, he can barely fit in it right now. He's about 330 pounds, and that comes from sheer work and determination. And he will be an early draft pick in the draft upcoming this May, and you'll see him playing on Sundays for a long time. And he is the only third cosita All-American that this university's ever had. And he's going to graduate with his masters here this weekend, correct? That was an unbelievable accomplishment. It took me five years to get an undergraduate, it took him four and a half to get two degrees, so he's way ahead of his coach. And then Sutton is on his way to becoming our only two-time consensus All-American ever. And just an outstanding young man, who I think some of you have heard the story, he came to us as a running back, and we moved him to defensive end, and I don't think he was really happy about that in the beginning, to be honest with you. But he has grabbed it and taken it, and he's a force to be reckoned with, and we look forward to, you know, just what he's going to do in this bowl game along with Max as well. And you don't get two individuals like this if you can't bring them down here when you're recruiting and show them everybody. And that's everybody in this room, everybody in the university. So, again, a deep heartfelt thanks, and it is fun to be champs, I can tell you that. So we'll leave you with that. Go Huskies.
Okay, thank you. Before you guys leave, and I know you want to get out of here, can we keep this for a couple of weeks? No. Thanks for bringing this over, and thanks for letting our audience and those who are watching on TV tonight this wonderful trophy. I mean, you were holding it up great. And I want to, it would be remiss of me not to ask Northern's President Lisa Freeman to come forward and say just a few words, Lisa, on, you know, not only this trophy, but what this means, you know, we talk about communiversity a lot, a combination of community and university. And I will say that I don't know if the relationship between this community and this university has ever been stronger than it is today. And that is, a lot of that credit goes to our new president, Lisa Freeman. Lisa?
Jerry, it's a pleasure to be here. I am so proud of the university, and I am so proud of our student athletes. And I always say that they are winners, not only in competition, but also in the classroom and in the community. And these students here, our athletic programs, and all of our students are really part of what makes us proudly DeKalb. You know, when you talk about communiversity, you talk about almost a familial relationship between DeKalb and NIU. And like all families, sometimes we don't see eye to eye, but in the end, we know that we are inseparable. As one goes, so does the other, and we will fight for each other and for our futures. And I'm so happy to be here today with this trophy. I think that camera with the nail polish is actually me, so I'm actually in that picture. And we're all looking forward to another Husky victory in Florida, but we are winners both DeKalb and NIU regardless. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Should I introduce everybody at council?
Sure, absolutely. I was going to thank you for, and ask that you, we'll go Huskies as you leave, but yeah, do you want a picture?
Absolutely.
You want us down here, or?
It'd be terrific if we could.
Okay, let's go, guys.
That's a good thing, right?
I love looking tiny.
Tiny, that sounds good.
Can we wide receivers or defensive ends?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, I mean, proudly DeKalb, I think every time someone comes up here, whether it be talking about something at the high school, or in town, or a cleanup effort, or a Christmas food drive, or our police and fire department helping young kids and the underserved in our community, it just makes us feel so good. And boy, this was really special tonight, too. So I'm so glad that the football team was able to come over, or a few members of the football team were able to come over and make us truly proudly DeKalb. So, now we move into item D on the agenda, and that's public hearing. I will open the public hearing on the proposed FY 2019 budget at 6:28. This public hearing is now opened, and I'm going to ask interim city manager Ray Munch to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of DeKalb is required by state statute to adopt an annual budget before the beginning of the fiscal year to which it applies. In this case, fiscal year 2019 begins on January 1, 2019. Prior to the adoption of an annual budget, the city is required to hold a public hearing. For fiscal year 2019, the proposed annual budget includes total revenues of $97,114,141 and total expenditures of $89,231,343. Of those totals, general fund revenues are $37,856,172 and general fund expenditures
Thank you. I don't believe anybody has asked to speak to this portion of the public hearing.
Mayor, I think we have Twain Brown out.
I beg your pardon?
Could we see if Mr. Brown would like to speak to the hearing or to the ordinance?
Okay, I think he had G.
The ordinance.
Yeah, G1, the budget ordinance. Right, Dwayne? Okay, very good. So, I don't think anybody has registered to speak to this item. I would close the public hearing on the FY 2019 budget at 6:30, 6:30. Now, we have another public hearing opening at 6:30, and that's for backup special service areas for Fatties, Culvers, Popeyes, University Village, University Plaza, First Rockford, Nelson, Casey's, Cornerstone, Sonic, Bandits Castle, 1114 Blackhawk Road, Home Two Suites, 1792 Sycamore Road, Plaza DeKalb, and one active special area for 924 Greenbrier Road. City Attorney Dean Frieders will speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Each of the backup special service areas that are contemplated here are separate backup special service areas that relate to an area that has undergone development in the city of DeKalb in the past couple of years. As a component of the related development agreement, a backup SSA is proposed to be created to provide a funding source to guarantee the future maintenance of stormwater detention, of open space, of common areas on the property. With regard to 924 Greenbrier Road, that's proposed to be an active special service area, an SSA that would have an annual levy, that levy being for the purpose of providing repayment of the loan extended for the installation of a fire suppression system at that Greek housing. The city has previously passed the ordinances proposing the establishment of the SSAs. Tonight is the public hearing, which creates a window for property owners affected by this to provide their response thereto, if any. At the conclusion of that window, we'll return with ordinances establishing the SSAs so that they will be in place. The SSA for 924 Greenbrier Road would have a levy at the end of 2019 payable in 2020. In each of these cases, the property owners have consented to the establishment of the SSA and are aware of this public hearing. Notice having been given by mail and by publication. Happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council, or I don't believe I have any speaker request forms from anybody who would like to speak to this public hearing? If not, we will close this public hearing at 6:32. Number three, our next public hearing is on the proposed body art establishment licenser for mindful tattoo. Once again, City Attorney Dean Frieders.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a more detailed presentation when this returns for separate action later in the agenda, but this is the public hearing required under the city's body art establishment license process in Chapter 64 of City Code. It's a public hearing relating to the consideration of issuance of a tattoo license for the establishment at 625 East Lincoln Highway. That is a proposed new tattoo facility in the old Fargo Theater. And again, I'll have more comment on it later in the evening.
And this public hearing began at 6:33. As City Attorney Frieders had indicated, we do have another item on the agenda regarding this particular tattoo parter, but we also have a number of folks who would like to speak to this item. The first one is Jim Stotter.
Yes, Mayor Smith, council members, happy to be here tonight. My name is Jim Stotter. I'm an attorney licensed in practice law in the state of Illinois with my office at 2045 Aberdeen Court, Sycamore, Illinois. And I represent Out on a whim Inc., an Illinois corporation, which is a current holder of a body art establishment license. The city's ordinance in paragraph 67.07 provides for renewal of such license, and to renew the licensee must supply the city with a copy of the licensee's current State of Illinois certificate of registration of body art establishment and pay an annual license fee of $100. Also, the licensee is required to complete a renewal application substantially the same form as the application form set forth for an initial application, to do that on an annual basis to the city owner before December 15th of each year. And there are penalties under that ordinance. If it's not done by the 15th, there's a chance to do it by the 30th, and if it's not done by the 30th, it could still be done on the 31st. If it's not done on the 31st, there would be an emergency suspension of the license and then subsequently a hearing. So my client, Out on a whim Inc., has a current license and fully intends to renew its license and comply in all respects with city ordinance and other regulation. And so I'm not sure what, how many licenses might be available. I know there's a limitation on how many licenses there might be within the business area, but my client, Out on a whim Inc., has one currently and intends to renew that going forward. In this particular instance, the applicant, Ms. Duncan, to do business as mindful tattoo, has been previously a shareholder of Out on a whim Inc., my client, and also was actually the president and director. She's resigned as president and director and now apparently intends to open, attempt to open a separate shop. But we just want to know that Out on a whim Inc. intends to continue and renew its license. And just for information, there's no requirement that a licensee must give up its license due to a change in officers or directors or shareholders. There is a requirement under the ordinance that the city be notified within 14 days of the occurrence if there is a change, and the city was notified of the resignation of Ms. Duncan as a director and president within 14 days of that resignation. In addition, the current licensee, Out on a whim Inc., has some concerns about the abilities of Ms. Duncan as a business manager. Actually, the accountant for the corporation is here and I think would speak to a couple of issues with regard to sales tax and that sort of thing. So he may speak in a moment. I know you've got a couple here. But we wanted to make clear that the current licensee does intend to renew its license, and as far as how many licenses might be available, I don't know, but there certainly might be a limit. We would also note that in her application, I think Ms. Duncan indicated that she has applied previously and been issued a license, but I suspect that that, she's taking credit for the license that's actually issued to my client, Out on a whim Inc. I don't think she's applied separately and received license separately, and so there might even be a question about how truthful, actually, parts of her application might be. So I think we might wish to say more when the ordinance is up, or the resolution is up, but I think that's all I have to say for the moment. I don't know if you wanted to skip to the accountant, Mike is here, and he's one of the people that you have.
Has Mike signed up for this?
He is. I can't remember his last name, so. Styles.
Mike Styles, yes, okay.
So if you want him next.
Yeah, he can be next, yeah. There are a number of people who'd like to speak to this item, so.
Thank you. The reason why I was requested to speak today is specifically because of the ability as a manager. I recently had to resign as Out on a whim's accountant because my dilemma, my ethical dilemma of properly and timely reporting of the shareholders, the daily, monthly, and quarterly sales for proper processing of the tax returns was not happening. So I took it upon myself to conduct additional research. The other shareholder brought me additional research, and I found that there may be some possible manipulations of the numbers thereby lowering the sales taxes that are paid in. In addition, in my investigation, I also found out that the location address on where the sales tax is being collected and paid is actually in Kirkland. So I figured you guys would, and ladies, would like to know that the sales tax that you are due, you're not getting it. And this is a direct result of the business manager. So that's everything that I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, the next speaker who would like to speak to this item is Chris May.
Hello, and thank you. My primary concern is, well, for those who don't know, I'm Chris May, my partner's John Bowman. We opened Proton Tattoo almost a decade ago, so we've been through all this before. But it was a lot of work, and there were certain things set in motion for, in a certain way, that being, one of which was, you know, allowing two licenses in the downtown DeKalb area. I recently had to resign as Out on a Whims accountant because my dilemma, my ethical dilemma of properly and timely reporting of the shareholders, the daily, monthly, and quarterly sales for proper processing of the tax returns was not happening. So I took it upon myself to conduct additional research. The other shareholder brought me additional research, and I found that there may be some possible manipulations of the numbers thereby lowering the sales taxes that are paid in. In addition, in my investigation, I also found out that the location address on where the sales tax is being collected and paid is actually in Kirkland, so I figured you guys would, and ladies, would like to know that the sales tax that you are due, you're not getting it. And this is a direct result of the business manager. So that's everything that I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, the next speaker who would like to speak to this item is Chris May.
Hello, and thank you. My primary concern is, well, for those who don't know, I'm Chris May. My partner is John Bowman. We opened Proton Tattoo almost a decade ago, so we've been through all this before. But it was a lot of work, and there were certain things set in motion for, in a certain way, that being, one of which was, you know, allowing two licenses in the downtown DeKalb area. So I'd assume that these new shops that want to come open, that would require some sort of changing of the zoning, which I'm not really a fan of, just because I think anybody who's applying tonight already knows that that's a regulation, and, you know, I don't see any, I don't think it's necessary, like, if you know that's the way it is, there's plenty of other places to go around town, why not take advantage of that? That was my primary concern. Also, just if anyone had any questions for us, for having been here for so long or anything like that, just putting it out there. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Shaw.
I'll make it kind of brief. I kind of agree with Chris. Chris May, he's been in the tattoo industry for a real long time, as well as myself and my wife, and just I think that maybe three might be just a little bit too much for the size of DeKalb. That's just all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Shaw.
Mayor, Mrs. Shaw is the vice president of Out on a whim Inc. She said she doesn't think she needs to.
Okay, okay.
You got it.
Yeah. I know that name, but.
Close enough. Oh, yeah. It's Chris Chiftilis. How are you doing? I'm speaking, hello, Mayor. Hello, city council. I'm speaking on behalf of my father, Pete Chiftilis, that's been owner of the building, which Out on a whim has been operating from and prior to over 35 years. Out on a whim's been there for nearly 20 years. And recently, within the past four or five years, we've had the tattoo license appointed to that address. And we would just like to allow Robert, other than Barbie Duncan, which has gone to rent a new facility out on the east side of town, and stop paying their rent amongst other requirements of their lease. We would like to just add our opinion into this as far as Out on a whim goes. They have been there for nearly 20 years, and we would like to see them remain in business in that establishment, and they've done excellent improvements to downtown, which obviously we are all in favor of that, in keeping downtown. So, other than that, that's pretty much all I have to say at this moment.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, I believe those, that completes, did you fill out a?
Mayor Smith, I'm Mark Gordian, returning on behalf of the.
Hi, Mark, yes.
I would look forward to the opportunity to address a lot of misinformation that you've heard thus far, but I don't know if perhaps we're going to do that when it's on later in the.
Yeah, did you, Mark, did you fill out a?
I didn't, I didn't know that we.
Please do that and look in where it is, because right now, we're in a public hearing. We're going to close that public hearing, but there are a number of additional items that are listed as items for separate action later on in the meeting.
Yes, I just want to clarify. We're going to.
Okay.
Then that's fine.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Mark. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to our public hearing under proposed body art establishment licensure for Mindful Tattoo? If not, I'm going to close this public hearing at?
What is it? 6:44.
Okay, now we move along to another public hearing, proposed body art establishment licensure for Tall Tattoo LLC. Once again, City Attorney Dean Frieders.
Thank you, Mayor. As with the previous public hearing, this will be on the agenda for consideration later in the evening, and I will comment at greater length at that point in time, but this relates to a proposed body art establishment, a new one proposed to be established at 205 South Third Street in the name of Tall Tattoo LLC.
And this public hearing started at 6:45?
6:44.
6:44, did we? Yeah, okay. No, the other one ended at 6:44. This started at 6:45. Thank you, Dean. Now we have several people who would like to speak to this item. Carrie McFalls, McFalls.
Hi, I've never done this before, so please be patient with me.
Please.
I'm here on behalf of Shane. I've known Shane for probably a little over, maybe just a little over a year. He's the sweetest, kindest, gentlest person I've ever talked to. I've got an opportunity to meet his fiancee. My daughter was going to go in the Army, she still is, but we had a little setback because the Army does not let you have a tattoo from the neck up, and he is actually helping remove that. If you would like to see it, you're more than welcome to do that. I mean, I brought her here so you could see that. That is not the only reason why. I've read a lot of people, stuff on social media about Shane's background. Everybody deserves a chance. I cannot explain how kind and gentle this man is. He deserves a chance. He's very intelligent. He is amazing with his art. Not only does he do tattoos, he does murals, he does portraits, he does, he can decorate shoes for you. I mean, this man's talent is unbelievable, and for him to open up his shop, he picked DeKalb. And everybody deserves a chance. Even Barbie deserves a chance. We have how many nail salons in DeKalb? Why can't we have three tattoo parlors in DeKalb? Why can't we have four tattoo parlors in DeKalb? Everybody deserves a second chance, and he chose DeKalb. He could have gone anywhere else, but he chose DeKalb. Would anybody like to see the progress on my daughter's tattoo? He is actually removing her tattoo from her art, from her neck. I'm more than welcome to show that to you. I brought her here. I'm just telling you, he can do good if somebody makes a mistake. My daughter made a mistake. Now she can't go in the Army until that tattoo is gone, but that's all I have to say. Everybody deserves a second chance.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate those. Ria Docter.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ria Docter. I am Shane's fiancee. I am currently a student at Loyola University full-time. I will be graduating at the end of summer, which I'm really excited about, but I am also just as excited about building this business with Shane in DeKalb. We love DeKalb. We truly, we drive around, we love River Mist specifically, we want to raise a family there like that. When we motivate each other to do, you know, for me to finish school and for him to open his business, we picked DeKalb because we see our future here. And Shane has talked about wanting to repaint buildings, he wants to do murals, even, you know, painting like water hydrants and things like that. He's done food drives already out of his house. I can't imagine the amount of things that he would want to do with the community in a business, and the things that we want to do together to just grow the business in the community. This is something that he is so passionate about, tattooing, but he's also passionate about giving back to the community and making something of himself. And I know he's made mistakes, but truly, I don't know an individual that is more passionate about starting something for himself and for the community than Shane. And DeKalb would truly be lucky to have a business with an individual that cares enough about the community and as much of the community as he does, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm just here to speak on behalf of my younger brother. Basically, what these two women said was a lot of what I was going to try and convey. Regardless of what is being slandered about his past, these things happened years and years ago. This is, this is, those are the things that happened to him in his youth. This is a young man now looking to better himself. And as far as the only other issue being, you know, code-wise, being so far away from a church or whatever this may be, you know, I don't know how the overruling of codes and things go, but like, just looking at like, you know, this is DeKalb, opportunity and innovation, you know, we can, we can give this man an opportunity through innovation by possibly either overriding these codes, you know, or whatever it may be. All I know is what he wants to do is so small and insignificant that it shouldn't have any impact on the church that's nearby, and at the same time, this man, he will, like Ria was saying, you know, he likes, will be willing to give back to the community as much as he probably humanly can, you know, just to keep a good name for himself as, and like this woman was saying, his heart and his caring. He's just a good man. There's no evil in the guy. He just wants to make a living for himself, just like everybody else. So, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what else to say, but give the guy a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Stotter.
Yes, Jim Stotter, Mayor Smith. The council members, again, still happy to be here. I spoke a bit ago, gave my address and information there, but again, I represent Out on a whim Inc., which is a current license holder. I know there is a limit on license numbers, and my client does intend to renew its application, renew its license, and whatever that may bear upon how many licenses might be available. So that's what we'd have to say with regard to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to this public hearing, proposed body art establishment licensure for Tall Tattoo LLC? If not, I will close this public hearing at 6:52 PM. So those are the four public hearings that we've had this evening as part and parcel of our city council meeting. We'd like to move along now to Item E, Special Items or Presentations, and we move forward to the first presentation, which is a presentation from the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce for its annual presentation, and I'd like to call forward its executive director, Matt Duffy.
Good evening, Mayor Smith and council. Thank you. As you mentioned, this is our annual presentation for the events that we do on behalf of the city, and the chamber is happy to step forward and be a part of this to help bring some events, or continue some events, I should say, in downtown and throughout DeKalb. Going through the different events, I'm just going to briefly just touch on them. We're always willing to go through in more detail if you have more questions on that. But we had our Breakfast with a Bunny event, an event that we partnered with the DeKalb Park District on. We had 120 for the best breakfast and a couple hundred for the egg hunt. It was a little chilly this year, as we know, the weather always plays a role in the egg hunt this year. And so that was a good event and a good partnership that we've been able to do. We had the Memorial Day Parade and Program, where we had the nice parade in downtown DeKalb that ends with a nice program at the Elwood House that we continue to do this year. The Farmer's Market is a continuing event that we had 29 different vendors. We also got a link through the, or grant through the Link Up Program that allowed us to match some dollars for those that use their Link card at the Farmer's Market. And the Live Lunch Series, we continue to do that in partnership with the Egyptian Theater. This year, we also added a new event with the Artigra event that goes on, and we did what was called the Art of Tasting. It was a wine tasting that was in conjunction with the Artigra event that went on throughout the city of DeKalb, and that was a good addition for this year. The Family Fun Fest continues to grow. It's an event that we moved to Hopkins Park a couple of years ago, and we had 54 different businesses that participated and a couple thousand attendees. So it's an event that people bring their families out to at the end of July. It's been a great partnership again with the DeKalb Park District for that event. Also, the Spooktacular event that was moved to a Thursday night a couple of years ago, and we had 34 different businesses that participated and about 1,400, 1,500 trick-or-treaters in downtown DeKalb. So if you wandered through downtown DeKalb at that time, you just saw the streets just full of ghosts and goblins and superheroes and all kinds of fun things, which is always great to see, people making their way throughout downtown DeKalb. Also, we had Santa Came to Town on the 30th of last month, to which we had about a couple hundred people attending that, and had the madrigals singing with the Egyptian Theater and cookies and caroling, and it's just a great event to bring Santa to town, and again, working with the Egyptian Theater and a great partnership there. Then we also have had Santa's visits with Santa's House on Van Bier Plaza. We've had over 100 attendees for that. We had this last weekend, the carriage rides that went throughout downtown DeKalb. We had 250 people ride carriages throughout downtown DeKalb on this past Saturday. And then as part of the evening event, we had the Taste of the Season, the second annual Taste of the Season. We had 12 different locations for that, and 28 different businesses that participated, and an opportunity for people to shop in downtown DeKalb and celebrate the season. So a lot of different events throughout the course of the year. We're continuing to take a look at those, ways to improve them, new ideas, and looking forward to working with the city again in the current year coming forward. Any questions that you have?
And you brought a special guest with you.
I did, I wanted to end with that, finish with a bang here. So we have our new, we want to thank Jessica Antonacci, who was a big part of the first eight months of the year, and then our new marketing events manager is Virginia Filicetti, so I wanted to introduce her to everybody here today, as she'll be, she took on that role as of October 8th, and is continuing to learn the role and help us build these events throughout the partnership with the city, so.
Okay, don't leave. Let me see if there are any questions or comments regarding the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce Annual Report. Any? If not, thank you. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our next presentation is the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation Annual Presentation, and here to make that presentation is its executive director, Paul Borick. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor Smith and Alderman, city, members of city council. Good evening. I'm pleased to provide a summary of development projects and initiatives in the city of DeKalb for 2018. The big story for 2018 revolves around continued investment and significant job creation that have reduced unemployment to historic lows, and the resulting tight labor market requires new initiatives to address employers' needs for workers. And to continue to expand our economy, DCEDC is working with its partners and the city of DeKalb to further diversify our industrial base and connect employers with talented university, college, and secondary students. Sustained capital investment and strong leasing and construction have reduced the vacancy rate in DeKalb County down to 5% from over 10% in prior years. Three consecutive years of employment growth averaging approximately 800 have reduced the average annual unemployment rate in DeKalb County to 4%, the lowest level since 2006. Target and 3M alone hired over 1,000 new workers during the past two years, bringing combined employment to 2,000. 3M moved, or Target converted its regional distribution center into an upstream distribution center in 2015, and 3M moved into their new million-square-foot distribution center in 2016. At DCEDC's annual dinner this past October, Global Supply Chain Director Jason Dickinson said that the DeKalb campus is 3M's largest in the world, and it is one of the most, one of the highest performing logistics and supply chain facilities in the United States. This success is attributable in no small measure to the resources available to DeKalb, or to 3M in the city of DeKalb, labor, education, community services, and others. 3M's growth has attracted Civa Logistics to DeKalb. Civa leased over 200,000 square feet of space in the Barbara Green Building to provide international shipping services for 3M. At the same time, the Barbara Green Building was being subdivided for use by another industrial tenant, and potential complications arose. At 3M's request, a meeting with the city of DeKalb was completed, was convened quickly to sort through building subdivision and safety requirements for multiple tenant occupancy. Solutions were identified in enabling both users to fulfill their occupancy deadlines. School Toolbox was then able to expand into 87,000 square feet of space on the. School Toolbox was then able to expand into 87,000 square feet of space on the east end of the building. In the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, sales tax exemption assisted with build-out of office space and facility requirements. Panduit is converting portions of their distribution center on Fairview Drive to manufacturing. Just-in-time delivery of products directly to customers has freed up space for manufacturing in DeKalb. Panduit, by the way, is a global manufacturer of electrical equipment for power, communications, computing, control, and security systems. Solotech also leased additional space in their building at 711 Fairview Drive to fulfill their increased demand for video, sound, lighting, and staging systems. Whirly Custom Fabrication acquired and remodeled the 300 Harvester Drive Building in DeKalb to accommodate growth in their performance diesel and custom metal fabrication business. The Enterprise Zone also assisted Whirly with office space build-out and parking improvements. And United Wire and Cable completed construction in addition to their Dietz Avenue Building. The DeKalb Taylor Airport has been instrumental in serving the needs of corporations like 3M, Sunoco, Johnson Controls, and Target. The DeKalb City Council earlier this year approved the airport strategic plan to guide airfield and business development, and DCEDC is working with the Airport Advisory Board to help implement the plan, including convening a business workshop early next year. DCEDC prepared dozens of proposals for industrial development prospects in Park 88 and the Chicago West Business Center site. Four active projects are pending, including prospects requiring freight rail service from the Union Pacific Railroad. DCEDC published its latest Voice of Industry report, summarizing the results of business retention survey visits, as well as business expansion projects over the past four years. Two-thirds of the companies surveyed indicated they plan to expand in the city of DeKalb and/or DeKalb County during the next three years, and DCEDC has already helped coordinate assistance with the city of DeKalb and other municipalities for 11 expansion projects resulting in over $100 million and 800 jobs. Increased demand for labor has accelerated plans for the city of DeKalb to consolidate transit systems to increase service and reduce cost. DCEDC convened Park 88 employers, together with the city and TransVax staff, to collect shift information and quantify employee demand for transit services between employment centers like Park 88 and residential clusters like the NIU campus and the Annie Glidden Corridor. Employers welcome the opportunity to work with the city to provide transit services to employees and job candidates that need it. DCEDC is working with the city of DeKalb to identify sites for new industrial park development. Sites are needed to accommodate expansion requirements of small and mid-sized companies. And the DCEDC board worked together with DeKalb County, the DeKalb County Community Foundation, and the NIU Center for Governmental Studies to complete a comprehensive economic development strategy, or SEDS Plan. The plan identified five broad goals, each with a series of implementation strategies. Five working groups involving over 60 business and community leaders are now working to detail and execute implementation strategies. The Target Industries Working Group is working on attracting companies engaged in research and development to the Research Park on NIU's West Campus, as well as promoting business partnerships with Northern Illinois University, like the Ideal NIU Entrepreneurship Plan, and on assisting NIU with promotion and development of the Northern Illinois Center for Community Sustainability. The group will also meet with industry leaders from the county's targeted industries to identify needs, opportunities for growth, and the attraction of complementary industries. The Branding DeKalb County Working Group has considered a variety of brand topics that reflect DeKalb County strengths and characteristics, and the group will be reviewing branding proposals and advertising firms to develop a branding strategy that best distinguishes and promotes the city of DeKalb and DeKalb County. A major business climate asset, the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, is completing its third year of operation. Since its inception, 27 enterprise-owned projects have generated $67 million of investment. Of this total, 13 were manufacturing and industrial, and 14 were commercial. Current commercial projects utilizing enterprise-owned benefits in DeKalb include Cornerstone, Plaza DeKalb, Sun Dog IT, and Home 2 Suites. The DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation is pleased to provide industrial economic development and enterprise-owned services to the city of DeKalb, and we look forward to working with city leaders and staff to recruit targeted industries, create a brand, a brand identity and strategy to distinguish the city and county and NIU and the marketplace, to recruit and attract investors to develop new industrial parks in the city, in addition to retaining and expanding local industry. We appreciate the contract for services with the city of DeKalb and funding and support, and we look forward to working on these projects together with all of you, and with the city council and the staff.
Stay right there. Are there any comments regarding DCEDC and their annual report? I'd just like to say, Paul, I want to thank you personally for your personal involvement in so many things this city is doing. You're on our Economic Development Commission as an ex-official member. You help with our Airport Advisory Committee and our, you know, out there, and I know it's, you've got a vested interest because you're charged with, with, you know, upticking economic development. So, frankly, it's vested, I understand that, but for the time you give and the time this gentleman spends with us, I just want you to know that, that I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. It's, it's a pleasure. It's a pleasure to work together.
Very good. Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. Okay, moving forward now, we're under E3, Approval of the Mayor's Appointments. These are usually done with an omnibus vote, one vote for the entire slate. If I get some consensus from council, we will proceed in that fashion. Okay. These are your mayor's appointments that I would like your consideration and your positive vote on. A, Appointment of Marilyn Cleland to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 20, June 30, 2020. B, Appointment of Leslie Metz to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30, 2020. C, Reappointment of Dan Kenny to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term through December 31, 2021. D, Reappointment of Ken Cook to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term through December 31, 2021. E, Appointment of Claire Crohn to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term through December 31, 2021. And F, Reappointment of Sharon Scala to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term through December 31, 2021. I'd ask for a motion to approve these mayoral appointments.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alder-
Could we have, you intend to do the omnibus vote? We'll need to have the motion reflect that?
I beg your pardon?
To-
Move to approve as omnibus.
Okay. It's been moved-
Second.
-by Alderman Fanucan and seconded by Alderman Fagan that we approve these appointments in omnibus form? Would that be the motion?
That sounds great.
Okay, good.
I want to, a question if I may.
Yes.
On the Environmental Commission members, they all say two-year term, but that would only take them through the end of 2020, yet the dates here in all say 2021. Which is correct, a two-year term through 2020 or a three-year term through 2021?
I haven't got those term limits in front of me. Do you recall, Ray, what? Good point. Point well taken. I think they are two-year terms, and that would be through, obviously, through 2020.
They are two-year terms keyed to the fiscal year, so it would be through 2020.
Okay. So, I would then ask for the amendment to the motion to approve the appointments in omnibus form, indicating that the reappointment of the four Citizens Environmental Commission members to a two-year term ending December 31, 2020.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanucan, seconded again by Alderman Fagan, that we approve the appointments as amended. Roll call.
This is the amendment we have-
This is the amendment. Roll call.
Right. This is, this is the term of office.
Term of office, right.
Good, okay.
It's just that we changed that and corrected that.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanucan?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
Now, to approve the appointments and reappointments of the mayoral appointments as amended in omnibus, in omnibus form, motion, please.
So moved.
It's been done already.
Oh, sorry.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanucan, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanucan?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith? Okay, now, we have, we have our two amendments disposed of, so we have a final, a final vote on approval.
We need a vote, final vote on the approval now?
There was only one amendment.
Yeah, we still have a hanging.
There was only one amendment.
No, we have two amendments. One is for the omnibus vote, and the other one is for correcting the term of office. So, now we go back to the main motion, which was actually yours, Alderman Fanucan.
Yes, I know. I made the one amendment motion, and we approved that, but there was no second amendment. We've already voted on the omnibus, haven't we not?
I believe your original motion was to approve this in omnibus form.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was the motion to amend the dates listed in the motion, and the amended motion passed, and the underlying motion as amended passed.
So, that's it. Yeah. We've already done what we needed to do on those items.
Okay. I'd like to, first of all, thank the council for approving these appointments and reappointments. I'd like to thank you, Bill, for finding that correction on the 2020 instead of 2021. I'd like to thank you, Lynn, for trying to keep us in proper order in terms of Robert's rules, but believe me, more than that, I'd like to commend the citizens of the city of DeKalb in continuing to want to serve their community in a way that continues to impress me and continues in a fashion that I'm so, I think, appreciative of. Okay? Okay. Moving forward then, with public participation, this is a item on the agenda, or a place on the agenda, that anyone can speak on anything that is not listed on the agenda. I understand that we still have quite a few speaker request forms who would like to speak to some items coming up on the agenda. Lynn, do we have any other folks that wish to speak to any item not on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Anybody? Okay. Then we'll move to the consent agenda. And again, if you recall, we have removed one of the items that was originally on the consent agenda. That was the approval of the 2019 schedule of meetings. We're going to consider that in separate form. However, now, we have five items still on the consent agenda that we, in most cases, also vote on in omnibus form. The consent agenda enacted by one motion, there's no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a council member. Are there any other items that we ask to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, I would ask for a motion to consider, in omnibus fashion, these items. Number one, Approval of City Council Minutes. A, Minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of November 13, 2018. B, Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of November 13, 2018. Two, Receive and File. A, Accounts Payable and Payroll through December 10, 2018, in the amount of $2,478,164.66. Which, an item that would become item three, Ordinance 2018-086, authorizing the 2018 levy and 2019 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes and special service areas of the city of DeKalb for fiscal year 2019. That's second reading. Ordinance 2018-087, abating taxes levied for corporate purposes of the city of DeKalb for the tax levy year 2018, bonds on second reading. And Resolution 2018-157, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for public transit funding from the Illinois Downstate Operating Assistance Program from July 1 through 2018 through June 30, 2019, in an amount not to exceed $5,192,400. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items, agenda, and all items listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we approve the consent Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanucan?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, now we go to items for separate action. We have a number of items, and I would ask for your patience as we go through the speaker request forms. If we get to a item for separate action where we have a report, we have some discussion, we want to make sure that everybody has an opinion, thank you, Lynn, to state their case. And what I'd like to do, then, make sure that, that's called to my attention if I don't call you forward. So, the first item for separate action, Ordinance 2018-090, adopting the annual budget of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019, in the amount of $89,231,343, and approving related regulations having financial impact. This is first reading. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Favor, and speaking to this item is city manager Ray Munch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you this evening is the ordinance that would approve the annual budget for the city of DeKalb. As was stated earlier during the public hearing, the city is required by state statute to approve an annual operating budget prior to the beginning of the fiscal year to which it applies. The city of DeKalb is on a January 1 fiscal year, so this budget would take effect January 1, 2019. The proposed FYE 2019 annual budget includes total revenues of $97,114,141 and total expenditures of $89,200,000. of $89,231,343. As was stated earlier, the general fund portion of that is revenues of $37,856,172 and expenditures of $36,952,172. This year's budget has required considerable work on the part of city council, the finance advisory committee, and city staff. The budget year began very early, in January, when city staff from every city department provided a service level review and a line item review of their budgets, presented to city council. Numerous meetings were held with both the city council and the finance advisory commission to work through this year's budget. And as most of you know, over the summer, we realized that the financial situation is laid out in our financial forecast for the next five years, had some significant challenges to overcome. Throughout the summer, we worked through budget balancing measures to address a significant funding gap, to achieve our fund balance policy for the city's general fund. And through that process, again, working with the council, finance advisory committee, and city staff, this year's budget ordinance includes expenditure reductions, which amounted to $1.7 million. Those come in the form of both permanent and temporary staffing reductions and reductions in operating expenses. In addition to the expenditure reductions, the ordinance contemplates approximately $415,000 in new or increased revenues. Those come in the form of increased ambulance fees, a newly implemented intercept ambulance fee, changes to the city's false fire alarm fee structure, a one-half of 1% increase to the local hotel motel tax, and the implementation of a 5% self-storage use tax. The result of these budget balancing measures will be an estimated ending general fund balance for fiscal 19 of $8,741,951. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
Well, before we open it up for a general discussion, we would like to entertain anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item. And we do have one person who's indicated as such, that's Dwayne Brown.
Dwayne Brown, Fourth Ward. The city has many problems. However, these problems, if handled properly, could all be overcome. We need first and foremost to attract more businesses and development to the city. We need a plan to lower sales taxes gradually until we become more competitive. We need a hiring freeze. We need to understand that our wage growth is growing at a rate of 13% every five years, that the stagnant local economy needs stimulus, that taxes reduce both demand and supply and drive market equilibrium. Advocates for tax cuts argue that reducing taxes improves the economy by boosting spending. Look at the building permits that have been issued just since the impact fees were waived. DeKalb has a 7.25% average income-to-home price ratio. According to Money Magazine, you need an annual salary of $64,573 to afford to buy a home in Illinois. DeKalb's per capita income is $22,273. The median household income in DeKalb is $40,859, both below the affordability level. We need to lower our natural gas tax from 0.04 per therm, a tax Sycamore doesn't even impose. We need to start increasing the funding amounts to our pensions. We have 57 employees who will be eligible to retire through 2022. We need to eliminate the crime-free housing ordinance and let the police department do those tasks. We don't need a self-storage facility tax or an amusement tax, nor an increase in the bar and restaurant tax that would be detrimental to those businesses. The city has to control costs. I will give you one example. The STEAM Learning Center. I tried to stop this in the committee of the whole meeting before any funds were allocated for this project. Instead, a consulting fee was allocated, and Rasio was hired to do a study. And the city spent many hours and untold expense on the project we just couldn't afford at $4 million of TIF funds. It just wasn't feasible. I see DeKalb Community Unit School District Number 428 has proposed a property tax increase after attending the school board meetings and seeing 64 cents out of every property tax dollar going to them. I understand why our property taxes are 60% higher than they should be. I was sad to see First Ward Alderman David Jacobson will not be seeking reelection, and Third Ward Alderman Michael Markort resigned for personal reasons. Something interesting out of the Chronicle, a recent article, out of the 3,322 full-time faculty and staff at NIU, only 55% live in DeKalb County. The other 45% live out of DeKalb County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Okay, now, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve this first reading of the ordinance. I believe we've heard from anybody, everybody, who has indicated an interest to speak on that item tonight. Let's open it up for any comments or questions. Alderman Fagan.
On page five, for the general fund summary, we've got, just shy of $37 million, I'm sorry, just shy of $38 million in general revenue and expenditures, just shy of 37, meaning that we've got a surplus of $904,000 in this budget? Is that the way I'm reading it, correct?
You're correct.
If you recall, our budget for 2019, as we had explained at the joint meeting of the Finance Advisory Committee, is balanced. What the hole that we're trying to dig ourselves out of is the overspending and the lack of revenue that we've had in 2018.
Yeah, that leads, and that's where I was going with this, is in here, do we have anywhere where we're short on the surplus and we're, and, because I believe, like the mayor said, we talked about at the joint meeting that it was going to be brought back into the Finance Advisory Council, I believe, in March. Anything on that in there?
Not in the budget itself, so obviously, as part of this process that we continue to work through addressing that shortfall, as the mayor alluded to, is primarily a result of a revenue shortfall in fiscal year 18, would continue to be addressed. So Director Miller could do the math on that for me to see where we still come short from that 23.6%.
As Bob is getting those figures ready, let me just indicate to the, to those listening and in the audience, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that during the meeting, the joint meeting of the Finance Advisory Committee and the city council, we decided that while we were pleased that we had a balanced budget in 2019, we had to move forward. To answer your question, Pat, I think it was suggested that we try to continue the discussion through, excuse me, March 31, to try to see what we can do to ratchet down those negative numbers. Because what we want to do is to bring that fund balance up to the full 25%. What we're showing now is at 23.66%. Is that not correct? Is that?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I just, I just was wondering if it should have been addressed here, but that's, I just wanted to bring that out.
Right.
So, that was my point, not trying to.
Yeah. Alderman Jacobson?
In looking at that same documentation, we're still showing the airport fund is carrying a pretty significant negative balance. What is the plan to zero that out?
Currently, the fund is, I mean, I think we put in some hotel motel tax, oh, no, local motor fuel tax to try to make that fund self-sufficient. It had a $478,000 due to the general fund over previous years. Based on estimates, it looks like the fund will have like $100,000 or $150,000 positive cash flow at the end of this year of FY 18. So that 150 will draw down on the $478,000 due to the general fund. So we can go one year at a time, or whatever direction you guys give. That's kind of the way it was set up in the past, to finally give the airport a funding source to kind of grow itself out of that $478,000 due to. This was the first year, FY 18, that it would actually have a positive cash flow at the end of the year. And then going forward on an annual basis, we can address it at that point in time and have them, I mean, it's going in the right direction, but if you want to address it all at once, that's, that's fine with me as well.
And how is it being reflected in fund balance right now?
Currently, it is, that fund balance, it does not include that deficit. So the, it is part of an unassigned fund balance. It is not actually that fund balance amount. That fund balance is like an operating fund balance, so it is not, it is the entire fund balance of the general fund, not short of the airport debt, or the airport due to. It's set up as a receivable, so it's showing as being received by the airport fund. So it is not part of that fund balance.
Again, in having that discussion through the budget process, we didn't want that to continue to occur on the last council. The idea was that we shouldn't have, we should have accurate numbers when we were looking at that fund balance, according to what was actual in the account, not paper IOUs to ourself to other accounts that didn't actually exist. And I think at the very least, before passage of this budget, that we need to have a discussion of how we want to approach that going forward. Again, the idea was that we had taken that one-time hit, I think it was two or three years ago, to zero out that fund balance and start fresh. Obviously, we're still continuing in a negative, the deficit in that account, but to reflect it fairly, my preference would be to see that hit fund balance directly at the end of the year, to zero it out if there are any negatives in any of our special revenue funds. And I would make that as an amendment to the budget, that we clear out that negative in the airport fund and zero that out to reflect it directly as an ending fund balance in this fiscal year.
Dave, you want to make that as a motion?
I do, please.
Would you state that as a motion, please?
I would move that in relation to our special service funds, all of them, including the airport, that any negatives annually are deducted from the, are made whole effectively by the fund balance in the general fund.
Has everybody heard and understood Dave's motion? I would entertain a second.
You all second.
It's been moved and seconded, and now we, let's have discussion on the amendment. Alderman Noriko.
So, in other words, if the airport fund at the end of the year is negative $100,000, to reflect that accurately, we should deduct $100,000 from the general fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that there we have a better handle on what, what our true numbers are.
Right.
Yeah. And that's what we want.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the.
Sure. Alderman Favor?
So I was, I just have a question. I was gonna, I would have, I don't know if we need to roll it into the, to the motion at another motion. In terms of, we had asked the FAC to continue working on the, on the current shortfall. The goal is March 31st, is that, do we need to tie that to this budget in a motion as well?
If that was a motion, I would second it.
So I would.
Can I suggest that perhaps?
We need to approve an annual budget, do we not?
Correct. Could I suggest that perhaps the council vote on the current amendment and then entertain further amendments?
Okay.
I withdraw my potential second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the motion, which is to approve the ordinance on first reading, adopting the annual budget, to reflect, as Alderman Jacobson said, to roll in whatever numbers at the end of the year out of the airport that is reflected in the visual of our ending fund balance. I didn't say it nearly as well as Dave did, but.
And I would assume that would also be a resulting change in our fund balance policy, or in our fund policies, correct? Going forward?
Yeah, we could take a look at the actual fund balance policy and reflect it during.
We're gonna have to do that. We're gonna have to do that. I mean, to sit here.
I just want to make sure that we're adding this in amendment, not just as a one-time fix for now, that that will change our fund balance policy, and that's.
Couldn't agree with you more, Dave.
The intent of this, of the motion.
Yeah. So, so it's been moved and seconded. We're voting on the amendment. Further discussion, just a moment, Bill. Alderman Fanouk.
All right. Two questions, if I may. I did not hear a change in the budget policy in the original motion, so I don't know that that, in the original amendment motion, so I'm questioning that. But also, I'm gonna ask our interim finance director if he could explain the impact of this a little bit more clearly for all of us.
Well, the $478,000 that is currently due from the airport fund to the general fund that will end up reducing fund balance will then increase the shortage that we have going forward by the $478,000. So, yeah, so that'll increase our deficit number.
Okay, so that'll make us close to a million dollars short in our fund balance.
Correct.
Thank you.
If I can, Mayor, to your earlier point, Alderman Fanouk, I would agree, the motion reflected a change to this budget, which is what's before the council. If changes in the financial policy are something that council's also directing, because that's not listed on the agenda, we'd recommend returning that as a, as a separate consideration in a future meeting, and we can certainly do that.
Well, we're not gonna want to do that until after we, we move this forward, if, I'm assuming that we're going to pass this at least on first reading tonight, and then we have our, our conversations with the Finance Advisory Committee. Is that not right? Yeah, okay. Alderman Noriko.
I have a question for our finance director. You said that $478,000, I think was the figure, but you, unless I didn't understand you correctly, that there was an amount that each year was reflected. So why, if we pass this amendment, would the whole $478,000 come out at one time?
Because currently, that is what's due at the end of this year.
Oh, okay.
There may be, I mean, the airport may have a cash flow, it's estimated to have a cash flow, so it might only be more like $300,000.
Okay.
That the general fund would have to kick in at the end of the year to kind of make it whole.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't understand that, yeah, that, do now.
That's your question, Kate?
Thank you.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor to amend the motion to approve the ordinance under first reading to reflect Alderman Jacobson's airport-related amendment. Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Amendment passes. Thank you. What were the numbers, Lynn?
Sorry?
The numbers were 7-0, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I got ahead of myself there. Okay, now, further discussion on the budget. Alderman, favor?
So I would like to move to keep the budget open till March 31st, to allow the FAC to continue to reduce the deficit, or to look for ways to reduce the deficit.
Second.
Could I suggest maybe, because the council is seeking to approve a budget this fiscal year, to, before the end of this fiscal and calendar year, to comply with state law?
Correct.
I suggest maybe a different way of phrasing that motion would be to direct that the budget return for consideration and specify a meeting, the second meeting in March, the first meeting in April, that it comes back for consideration of amendments based on FAC recommendations at that time?
Yes, I can do that. So I would recommend that the budget come back for consideration in the first meeting of March, so that the FAC can continue to review the budget and make recommendations.
You know, it's been reminded, or we've been reminded as a council, many times by the Finance Advisory Committee, that any budget can be amended throughout the year if need be. And so I think that's what, what, hopefully, Tony, your suggested amendment addresses. So we have a motion, did we have a second on Tony's? Okay. Move by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Jacobson?
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I'd like to get the wording right. Is this the budget coming back into consideration in the first week of March, or by the first week of March?
First meeting.
By the first meeting of March.
First meeting.
Sorry?
The first meeting in March.
Thank you.
Are we comfortable with that? The first meeting in March? I know that they were, when we met with Finance Advisory Committee, they were talking about March 31st, which would be, you know, the, later on than the first meeting in March, but if that's what we want to do, that's what we want to do.
So the point is, is we may have to make amendments to what they bring, we might want to have further discussion. So at least it becomes, the goal would be to have it reviewed and completed by the end of March.
Okay. Any further comment or questions on that amendment? Roll call, please.
Okay, can I confirm who seconded that motion?
Yes, Alderman Jacobson.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven-I?
Amendment passes. We still have the original motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. Any further discussion? Alderman Norrico.
The hiring freeze, there was notation that the freeze related to the positions that are currently open, and that at the city manager's discretion, if another position, if other positions open up, that could be, those positions could be filled. Do we want other positions that open up, except for police and fire, to come before the council?
I would certainly second that if it's a motion.
Are you making that a motion? Alderman Norrico?
Yes.
What is the exact motion currently?
Would you verbalize that?
Vacant, vacant positions must come before the city council during the time of the hiring freeze, except for police and fire.
Second.
Must come before the council for authorization to fill the position, except for police and fire.
Can I clarify one point on that?
Sure.
Is that all positions within the police and fire departments, or sworn positions only?
Sworn positions.
I, I think one thing we haven't mentioned tonight, prior to voting on, on this amendment, is that one of the reasons we felt it very, very important that we do this, and move in a fashion where, while we approve the 2019 budget, keeping in mind that we still have to hack away at the deficit caused by 2018, that one of the primary reasons for wanting to do that is because we realize that we would have a new city manager onboard. And so that will, that will play into this. So our new city manager will not be in a position where they didn't have any input. They will ultimately have some input as we, excuse me, as we amend the 2019 budget from the time we pass it to the meeting in December. Does that make sense?
So to clarify the motion on the floor, then, Alderman Norrico, it is to amend Section 8 of the FY19 budget to indicate that any non-sworn, any vacancies and non-sworn personnel-related positions require city council approval to fill.
For the, during the six-month freeze, correct?
Yeah, during the, yeah.
Is it just for six months, or is it for the full year?
It's your motion.
Let's do it for six months, because, you know, we can always change that, and, you know, by then, we would have, you know, had an opportunity to take a look at the fiscal year 19 budget, and the city manager, you know, should have settled in by then, so six months.
So prior to July 1st, 2019?
Yeah.
Comfortable with that, David?
So Alderman Jacobson and I agree.
When, when hasn't that occurred?
It's a new era.
Any further discussion? Jean, our police chief, Jean Lawrie.
Thank you for allowing me to interrupt this process a little bit. I understand the desire to protect the sworn positions. I would also remind the council that within the police department, there's a group that serves both police and fire, it's in our 911 center, and I consider those positions as key as, as sworn positions on the street. So interruptions in that service aren't only a disservice, or aren't only a loss internally within the police department, it's a disservice to the community. So I, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Jean.
Yeah, I think we need to, if I could say...
Yeah, Alderman Fagan.
Yeah, we need to get the communication in there, along with the sworn officers. Telecommunications, yeah, thank you. We need to do that. Want to amend that, or do that again?
Can you add that to your amendment, Alderman Norrico?
Okay, yeah, add that.
Can you add that to your second? Alderman, sure. Jacobson, do we understand then?
So...
Go ahead, Dean.
I guess, to have a clear record for our clerk, can I suggest that we withdraw the motion second on the floor and restate it? Would that be acceptable?
Sure.
Okay.
Withdrawn.
So the amended motion would be, the amended motion that you're seeking to make, Alderman Norrico, would be amending Section 8 of the FY19 budget to indicate that no vacancies in any position other than a sworn fire or police position, or telecommunicator, shall be filled without the approval of council prior to July 1, 2019.
Correct. Thank you.
Second that motion.
Any further discussion? We are now voting on, I think, the third amendment to this ordinance consideration. Roll call, please.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norico?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven-I?
Amendment passes. Any further discussion on the ordinance on first reading? Alderman Jacobson.
As a point of information, I know we talked about it, obviously, in our last meeting, as it related to the Central Business District snow removal and the decalb CVB funding. Obviously, it's a 284-page document today, I didn't get all into the nitty-gritty of those two things, and just wanted to see where those added back in, or where, where do those fall in this budget?
Yes, both of those items, the funding was reallocated to the budget, so that has been corrected.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? This ain't easy, folks, this whole budget process, and, again, I appreciate everybody's patience with one another and everybody's understanding. So we have a reading on the floor, a motion on the floor, a second that we approve first reading tonight of the 2018-090, adopting the annual budget for FY 2019. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norico?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six-I?
Motion passes. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
So that would be, our second reading would be brought back next week? Yeah. Moving right along, item number two. G2, 2018-085, adopting Chapter 37, Tax Increment Financing Regulations. This is second reading of an ordinance that we passed on first reading at our last meeting. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we approve second reading of this ordinance. Speaking of this item is our economic planner, Jason Mitchnick.
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, this is the second reading of the proposed Chapter 37, which would regulate the city's use of tax increment financing funds. We discussed this at our previous meeting, but to highlight some of the regulations that would be included in Chapter 37, one would be to conduct quarterly joint review board meetings. As it currently sits, the city is only required to have annual joint review board meeting, and that's based on a requirement for us to review the annual reports for existing TIF districts. We also meet with the joint review board as, in relation to the creation of new TIF districts, or the amendment to existing redevelopment plans. The quarterly joint review board is intended to provide the other taxing districts that are impacted by TIF, an opportunity to provide more direction, and provide the city with an opportunity to collaborate more with those taxing partners on the use of those funds. In addition to the quarterly meetings of the JRB, the city would also be required to provide enhanced reporting. As I stated, the, the current requirement is based on an overview of the annual report, which is after the fact, so the annual report is conducted after the audit, which is usually about 180 days after the close of a fiscal period. So when we do meet with the joint review board, we're reviewing expenditures from the previous fiscal year, and we're already about halfway through an existing fiscal period. So this would provide, at those quarterly meetings, we'd have to provide expenditures through that previous quarter, and that gives the joint review board an opportunity to provide feedback on how the city is expending those funds during the fiscal period, rather than after the fact. It also includes restrictions on the use of TIF funds, most specifically to cover administrative fees. This is something that's been called into question, which we've discussed extensively up until this point. It also would restrict the use of TIF for standalone infrastructure projects. This is something that we also recognize, looking back at historic expenditures in TIF, that the city used TIF and relied pretty heavily on that for the use of infrastructure, such as street maintenance, storm water control, and things like that. The one, the one infrastructure expenditure that is excluded from that provision is funding at the DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport. The cities are, has had a, a five-year TIP, which is a transportation improvement program that has been approved by the FAA, and there is a local match of 5% that's required, so we would be using TIF for that 5% local match, which would be allowed under Chapter 37. Additionally, the city would be required, for any future consideration of projects, to publicly disclose a projection of return on investment, and also include a citation of expenditures for any costs with TIF, citation to the TIF Act. The ordinance does contemplate that a 2/3 supermajority vote of the JRB would be required to make any changes to Chapter 37. However, we did point out that future administrations would be able to remove that clause from the ordinance, should they decide that was the difference primarily between how the Chapter 37 regulate the use of TIF versus an intergovernmental agreement that we discussed at the last meeting. At our last meeting, a request was made to amend Chapter 37 to include reporting on the performance of existing investments. The question was raised about the disclosure of sales tax. We did contact the Illinois Department of Revenue, and they did confirm that we cannot publicly disclose any sales tax information, even in, even in a red light, green light, or meaning of status or projections. What we have included and drafted into the ordinance in lieu of that was that anyone that is on the reciprocal agreement, so there are city staff and elected officials that are part of the reciprocal agreement, that can see that information, so this staff would still be required to track the sales tax performance of TIF projects, but it would only be disclosed to those officials that are on the agreement with IDOR. At this time, I would entertain any questions that council has.
Before we turn this over for general discussion, we do have one person in the audience who would like to speak to this item, and that's Steve Capitan.
Wanted to address the, well, first of all, I wanted to be, I'm supportive of the regulations in general, but there are a couple of concerns I have, and I'd wanted to address those. Regarding number three, the prohibition on standalone city infrastructure projects, it seems to me that a paradox emerges from this regulation. Its value is in prohibiting the city from relying on TIF for funding to maintain basic infrastructure in the city. This is particularly a problem in a TIF district that never reaches its goals and doesn't end until it reaches the statutory maximum of 23 years. Jason referenced that. On the other hand, standalone infrastructure projects that address improvements or remediation outside the normal maintenance projects are absolutely appropriate, TIF projects, and shouldn't be subject to approval by the TIF Joint Review Board. The fiber optics in the CDB mentioned in the agenda item on TIF II expiration is an example of that. And then on number five, the 2/3 majority vote of the council requirement to amend the provisions of this chapter of the code. The city staff memo points out that a supermajority requirement is not codified in state law, could not be, or could be overturned by a simple majority vote of the, of a future council. As a matter of transparency, the council should eliminate this provision because it is toothless. And regarding the sales tax revenue requirement, I would think that in projects with multiple business, multiple businesses, that aggregate reporting of revenue would not reveal individual business numbers, and therefore shouldn't be objected to. I raised this at the last council meeting, I get to have the answer to that, this red light, green light is not the question, it's an aggregate question. Wondering if a council member would be willing to, since I don't have a representative here, a council member not my ward would be willing to ask that question of our city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I have nobody else who has indicated a desire to speak to this. Any comments? Alderman Jacobson?
I'm conflicted. Obviously, I wasn't here for the last discussion... I'm conflicted. Obviously, I wasn't here for the last discussion of this, and much of this is what I have been asking for with TIF for the last seven years that I've sat here. My question, while I appreciate the effort we've put into it, is, is right this second now the time to pass this? Obviously, we are still discussing the potential of I G As with our other taxing bodies. We are still discussing what we want to do with TIF two and the potential surplus, or not potential surplus, depending on what decisions this council makes. I worry that in passing this now, we may tie our hands in some of that decision-making that is very near around the corner, and that's what frustrates me. I think we've made the good faith effort to show, yes, we're willing to step up and put some really good guardrails around TIF as a partner to the other taxing bodies. It remains to be seen whether or not those taxing bodies are willing to step to the table to be a partner with us. And I, again, am worried about taking unilateral action right now that would tie our hands in the potential eventuality that those taxing bodies decide not only not to be a partner going forward, but an adversary in whether our existing TIF process or the creation of a new TIF process. And I wonder if it would make sense to table this for a month or two until we can get those answers and make some decisions related to TIF that are on our agenda and have the backup, and we are waiting for the meeting space to fit them before we jump the gun. And I wanted to proffer that out there for you guys to discuss before I made a motion to that effect.
Again, we're looking at this to second reading. It's been approved on first reading, and David, I genuinely appreciate your concern. I genuinely appreciate your input. I have some comments that I was going to share with this council and this city at the end of tonight's meeting, but I feel it's appropriate that we do that at this point. And whether or not this changes your views on consideration of this item, we'll just have to wait and see. I'd like to speak to the ongoing saga of TIF. Much has been discussed, much has been argued. It's now grown into letters exchanged between DeKalb County State's Attorney, Rick Amato, and myself. I don't know if I could be more forthright and more candid than what my last letter emailed to Rick on Friday said. In it, I concluded, and I quote, "We're working to do what is legal, what is ethical, and certainly to avoid what is outrageous. We face a series of unfortunately intertwining deadlines, the complications of the interests of many parties, and the events of the past several weeks, all in addition to the normal challenges associated with running a city." And I said, "Rick, we cannot succeed at surmounting these challenges unless we do so with our partners." I emphasize the word "partners" because I firmly believe that the best path forward is one in which we all walk together. It is for that reason that I renew my request that we get together and meet to talk in a small group with your office and county officials. Given time constraints, I'd like to suggest we convene that meeting early next week, the week of December ten. I have not shared this with council, and you'll see why now. State's Attorney Amato and I have had conversational exchanges over the weekend into today. As a matter of fact, we were talking at 4:15 this afternoon. We've agreed that a continued discussion with all the taxing partners remains not only a viable option, but perhaps the best option now. Hopefully, this will lead to a further determination of what needs to be done in spearheading an honest restoration of trust by our partner taxing districts with the city of DeKalb. We owe the citizens of DeKalb no less. So, I hope we can continue those discussions. And Pat, you were representing us as that working group with our taxing partners. We need to get to the bottom of this, and we need to move forward. And I think State's Attorney Amato and myself, we, after having, again, talked a number of times over the last 48 hours, feel we want to do that. So, those are my thoughts. Any further observations on passing this ordinance on second reading? Or on Alderman Jacobson's comments? Yeah, Alderman Verbig?
Very well-stated, Alderman Jacobson. I was a no during first reading for the very reasons that you lay out. I would prefer not to vote no and table this and continue what has been a very productive discussion, but we're just not there yet.
Alderman Fagan?
When this was first presented, I thought this was an excellent idea, considering what's coming up here and the future discussions with the other taxing bodies. Yeah, that's true, Alderman Jacobson. I mean, what you're pointing out about tying our hands. The other thing you have to look at also is shortly we'll have a new city administrator. And just like Alderman Norah Kilb talked about with a budget of six months because of new administrator to hold back, pushing this back 30 days, or 60 days, I don't think that would hurt. I don't think that we're gonna, money's gonna be allocated out to make a difference on this Chapter thirty-seven. As much as I'd like to see this go forward, I wish everything was in place. I wish we weren't in a situation where everything's been pushed back, pushed back, and it was, I don't believe that has anything to do with the people that we work with, but we're at that point. And I'm not opposed to, I don't want to vote no on it. I'd vote yes on it, but I'd rather see a table down the road, whether it's 30 or 60 days, if someone wants to make that motion.
Alderman Norae Ko?
My question is whether the other taxing bodies would see that kind of action as our backing away from a willingness to address concerns. I don't know. I didn't meet with them. You know, perhaps the mayor can address that question, because he at least has had the discussions with the state's attorney, who seems to be one of the stronger voices saying, "What's happening? How is it happening?" and so forth.
Alderman Fagan?
In the three sessions there, I don't look at it as pushing back. Matter of fact, the discussions that we would have sooner than later, that some of this can be brought up. It can be brought up, I look at it as a supposit, like I said, when that first came out, I thought it was excellent. But you know what, it's, let me ask you this. Would it look just as bad as if we went ahead and decided what we're gonna do and pass a chapter on it and not ask them?
That's a fair point.
So, I, rather than saying yes or no, I think it's tabling it for 30 or 60 days. That's me.
If we do that, I'd prefer the 30 to keep it.
I'll go with that.
You want to make that, excuse me, Alderman Fanouken?
Actually, I was gonna go ahead and make the motion, and we tabled this till the second meeting in January.
Okay.
Second. You stole my thunder.
I know.
You guys are pretty good tandem tonight. That's great. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Jacobson, that we table further consideration of ordinance 2018-085 until the second meeting in
In January.
January. Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I think it's important to note that we're not pulling away. It had its 6-1 vote on first reading. The votes are here to pass it when it's ready to be passed. I think, again, this gives an opportunity to the other taxing bodies to give their constructive criticism and feedback on these regulations, and potentially add some if they feel necessary before it's passed. I think it leads to a more collaborative effort. And I mean, that's my reason for wanting to slow this down a little bit. It's not to table, it's not to derail it. It's to come back and make good partnerships with everybody at the table. That's the way I'm approaching it. I would assume the rest of you are in that mold as well.
Yeah, I like that approach.
And I think it's important to state that before taking the vote.
We have a motion to table and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but if you table the motion, then it will require a, someone to take it back off the table at some point in time, whereas a postponement would, by its very nature, include a direction to put this back on the agenda at that time.
Yes, you suggested that a couple of weeks ago, and I thought that was excellent. Yeah. So, David, would that be okay, postpone?
Change of wording to postpone from table is very acceptable.
My, okay, I'm not able to hear Alderman Fanouken.
I'm sorry, Lynn. The change in wording from table to postpone is very acceptable.
So, you really meant postpone?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded that we postpone this until the second meeting in January. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Norae Ko?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
I know that doesn't give you full clarification, Jason, because I know you work so hard on wording this tax increment financing regulations, but I hope that you see what this council is doing in table, excuse me, postponing this until January.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, based on the conversation that I had with State's Attorney Amato, based on the fact that I've already had a discussion with Pat Fagan, who is going to move forward in trying to get some of these other tax, taxing district partners working together in the working group together, I think we're gonna be in a much better situation. And this perhaps addresses some of the points that Steve Capitan had when he was addressing that. So, I see Steve nodding his head, so that's good. Okay. Thank you. Ordinance number three, ordinance 2018-088, amending Chapter thirty-eight intoxicating liquors. Section 38.24, powers of the liquor commissioner as it pertains to providing a process for granting deviations from otherwise applicable distance setback requirements. This is second reading on ordinance that was passed at our last meeting. Motion, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbig, seconded by Alderman Favor. Dean Frieders will speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated at the first reading of this ordinance, this adopts a change in state law, which allows a municipality to entertain local deviations from the setback requirements applicable to liquor licenses, instead of requiring an amendment to the state statute on a case-by-case basis. This would still follow our ordinary process for licenses coming to the city council for consideration of approval. So, if a setback waiver is requested, it would come, it would go through the staff review process, it would go to the liquor commissioner for his determination. If he chose to not grant it, the license would terminate, or the application would terminate. If he chose to recommend it, it would go forward to council, and the council would have the ultimate decision on the issuance of the liquor license.
Thank you, Dean. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Fagan?
Whoops.
Norae Ko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
And we'll try to clarify why Pat did not vote on that, I believe.
I think he's in the run.
He recused himself because of some, yeah, some potential conflict. So, thank you. Okay, number G four, Resolution 2018-158, approving a body art establishment license for Mindful Tattoo, 625 East Lincoln Highway. Motion, please. Second. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Alderman Verbig, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we approve this resolution. Once again, as promised, Dean Frieders will address this item, and then Dean, after you make your presentation, we do have some folks who would like to speak to it before council discusses it.
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated earlier, this is the first of two tattoo licenses that are before the council for consideration this evening. This establishment is within the area that's defined in Chapter sixty-seven as being essentially the central business district. That area ends at Seventh Street. This location is 625 East Lincoln Highway, DeKalb, Illinois, in the Fargo Theater Building. Currently, within that defined area, there is Proton Tattoo, located just north of City Hall, and there is Out on a Wim at, I believe, 127 East Lincoln Highway. The other tattoo establishment we have in the community right now is out at West Lincoln Highway, and is not within the central business district defined area. Within the central business district, there is currently a limitation in Chapter sixty-seven indicating that there shall be no more than two tattoo licenses, two body art establishment licenses. We did have kind of a unique circumstance arise here in that Out on a Wim, a current licensee at 127 East Lincoln Highway, is currently operated by two people working as partners that are co-owners of it, 50% owners, as it's been explained in the city. Out on a Wim underwent a change of ownership approximately two years ago, I want to say 2016, 2015 timeframe. At the time that they did, they came in and explained that it was a change in ownership, and really, the corporation only, but they went through the entire licensure process. We did a public hearing. It came to city council. The city council approved of continuation of Out on a Wim Tattoo, albeit under new ownership. Several weeks ago, we were contacted by attorneys representing both of the owners of Out on a Wim, and the indication at that point in time was that one of the owners, Barbara Duncan, sought to leave the business, and the other owner sought to continue the business. And so, we talked through the implications of that under city code. Under our city code, there are requirements, if you have a body art establishment license, that you disclose who the owner of the business is, and also, if it's a corporate entity, that you disclose the identity of any person who owns a 5% or greater interest in it. You're also required to provide certain background information on anyone on the license, anyone who is an owner, regarding their eligibility for holding office, their eligibility for the license, I should say, whether they've been convicted of certain crimes, and certain other factors that are considered relevant to that evaluation. other factors that are considered relevant to that evaluation. As we talked through the process of one of the owners leaving, and as we talked through the way the city code is worded with respect to the disclosure of the individual owners, and as we also talked through the past history on Out on a Wim and their previous change in ownership, the conclusion that all three attorneys reached was that if a change in ownership was to occur, it would require a new application from Out on a Wim with respect to the operations of Out on a Wim. We've also reached out to the Illinois Department of Public Health because they separately regulate tattoo establishments. They have a state license where you're required to disclose the operator, and in similar form, you're required to disclose anyone having, I think it's a greater than five percent interest in that company. And what we've been advised by the Department of Public Health is that where there's a change in ownership, that also triggers an obligation to work with them to update the license. It's not a simple renewal. As that process was discussed, and we identified the timelines and identified how this would impact their current operations, what we indicated is that to work with our existing business in town, the city would continue to honor their license for Out on a Wim through its current term, which ends December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. And there was ample time for both parties to resolve this for Out on a Wim's new remaining ownership to apply for a tattoo license and to maintain operations. In the time since then, they've changed attorneys that are representing them, and I've spoken with Mr. Meyer from Mr. Stoddard's firm several times over the past couple of weeks, and we've acknowledged that same process. We've looked at the codes, we've talked through it, and acknowledged that same outcome through those discussions. I spoke to Mr. Meyer most recently, well, I spoke with him, I believe it was today, when he forwarded information that was provided to council with regard to the former co-owner. I spoke with him at the end of last week, and he indicated that they were still working on submitting their application for a new license at Out on a Wim, and that they acknowledged it was not before council at this point in time. They may have a temporary interruption of their operations until it gets before council at the beginning of two thousand and nineteen. But we've tried to work with both parties as they go through what sounds like a somewhat difficult dissolution or separation of their business. With regard to what is presently before the council, we have a request for a license for Out on a Wim, I'm sorry, we have a request for a license for Mindful Tattoo in the Fargo Theater Building. It is from one of the former owners of Out on a Wim. They successfully completed all of our background investigation. They had a positive recommendation. The only issue that hangs out there is whether there are currently, or whether as of January first, two thousand and nineteen, how many licensees there will be in the central business district. Based upon the discussions we've had with the remaining owners of Out on a Wim's attorneys, both their previous attorney and their current attorney, we understand that their plan was to come in and apply for a new license with their change in ownership and seek authorization from council if necessary at that point in time to change the number of licenses permitted in the central business district from two to three. We heard a different indication tonight. I'm not sure what their plans are at this point in time. What we have before us at the moment is the application from Mindful Tattoo. At this point in time, I don't believe we've yet received a renewal application for Out on a Wim. It would be our recommendation that, once we identify what Out on a Wim is seeking to do, that if they are seeking to have a new license for two thousand and nineteen, that that return to council for consideration, and that if council chooses to grant that, that you alter the number of licenses available in the central business district. Again, we identified this as a challenge several weeks ago, and we've been working with attorneys over that period of time and going through the code and going through the relevant regulations and trying to come up with an understanding that was consistent with the requirements of code. If you read code to permit you to simply renew a license even if there was a change in ownership, that would obviate the obligations in code to go through the review of the individual applicants and confirm that they were eligible for license. So we believe that position would be inconsistent with the code. From a staff perspective, we were not able to identify anything in the background review process or the review of this premises that gave us concern regarding this licensed applicant. We do have certain conditions that are reflected in the resolution that we recommend being attached to approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So before we turn this over to council for further discussion, the resolution has been recommended for approval by staff, I'd like to call the following folks, and the first one is Jim Stoddard.
Mayor Smith and the council members, it is kind of unfortunate when, you know, business people have a disagreement and may go their separate ways, but to fill in a bit more details, council for the city, I know, has spoken with one of my partners, and I wasn't in on all those conversations. I know, as a result of those conversations, the, I believe that a, an application has been submitted by Melissa as well. I think it's Melissa Schall on the basis of Out on a Wim Tattoo, Inc., and I think an application has been already filed with the city, but just very recently, and council may not know that. On the other hand, and so they might proceed with that, but I think they also do intend to renew their, apply for their renewal of their license as Out on a Wim, Inc. And the way I read the ordinance, it seems to me clear that that would be done, it's to be done on an annual basis. If there's been a change in ownership, that would need to be disclosed, but in fact, I think under the circumstances, and this may seem kind of strange, but the, Ms. Duncan has resigned as a director and as president of the company. I don't think she, as far as I know, she still owns her shares. The ownership hasn't actually changed. The management, the vice president is still the vice president, and in the absence of the president, the vice president acts. And so we would take the position that Out on a Wim, Inc. will be renewing its application, applying to renew its license, and it has a license until December thirty-first, and that under the ordinance that the city has, it would have the right to apply for that, renew its application on an annual basis, and so we would proceed accordingly and disclose whatever changes have been made, which at this point would be the director has, one director has resigned, the president has resigned, but otherwise, things are the same as they have been all along. So that's where we stand with regard to that, and I don't think an application for renewal has been filed yet, but on the other hand, the ordinance is pretty clear that up until December fifteenth, there's not even a penalty. That's when the due date is, and we're today at, I think, December tenth. If it wasn't filed by December fifteenth, there's a penalty, fifty dollars, to file it by December thirtieth, and if it's not done then, it's another hundred dollars penalty. And if it wasn't filed on December thirty-first, there would be a, an emergency suspension of the license, but still, that doesn't mean that the license couldn't be renewed. It would in fact indicate that there would be a hearing within a short period of time, as stated in the ordinance. So that's where we stand, and we think that there is a limit under the ordinance that says no more than two body art establishments shall be located in the downtown business area. There are two there presently, and so without some change in the zoning ordinance, there couldn't be a third one under the present circumstances. I'd be happy to, if somebody has a question about our position, I'd be happy to address that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
You're going, you're passing, okay. Michael Stiles?
Thank you. The addition of additional licenses for the tattoo industry poses a unique responsibility. Responsibility without, excuse me, opportunity without responsibility is a public hazard. As the gentleman said, this is your motto, opportunity. But do we provide opportunities to individuals who may not understand what it is they're actually taking on? You know, I believe that these new applicants are naive to what it actually takes to manage, run, and handle this business. You know, I understand that they may be talented, very talented tattoo artists, but do they understand what are the additional requirements that are a part of this, every day a part of it? I've been an accountant twenty-seven years. I've assisted people in starting over two thousand companies, so I have a unique understanding of what it really takes, not only to start, but to keep it running. Example, is everyone here aware that right now, the Illinois Department of Revenue is targeting all tattoo shops for sales tax audits? No, no one's aware of that. You guys are. And the reason they know is because they started with them, passed it with flying colors. Absolutely. One of the applicants is starting up as a sole proprietor. Is that applicant aware that if there are any liabilities, whether they're medical, anything happens, that that individual is personally liable for those? Does that person have the wherewithal to handle that? I'm not sure that's a part of the application process at all. I'm not sure that they're aware that the tattoo removal, I just checked to see if it was part of a cosmetology license or an esthetician license, and the Illinois Department of Professional Regulation specifically forbids those licenses to do that type of work. As a matter of fact, I did a little bit more research, and in May, the Illinois Department of Public Health issued a news release that specifically states that tattoo removal is to be supervised by a physician or a physician's assistant, or ignoring the physician's supervision requirement not only puts patients at risk, but owners or operators of tattoo establishments could be found guilty of practicing medicine without a license. Repeated or egregious violators could be sentenced up to five years in prison and fined twenty-five thousand dollars. We, we just heard that they're doing that, hence the, I believe they're naive to what it is that they're actually getting themselves into. You know, in addition, you know, this due diligence took me about twenty minutes to find. So it's not like it's hidden or difficult to locate. My position is, are you comfortable allowing people who may not have the full understanding of what they're taking on access to your college kids? Because that's what we're really talking about. You guys have a unique population here of college kids. You know, I'm shocked that the licensing doesn't have an insurance requirement, no liability requirement, no E and O, no malpractice, none of that. I'm very shocked by that. In addition, I'm also shocked at the cost. You know, as an accountant, I love things to be inexpensive. That's how I'm made up. But to be quite honest, I think you guys should add zeros to the initial application and the renewal, from two, two hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-five hundred, and the renewal of a thousand. You need to have people not be able to take pocket change and get a license with it. You need to let them have skin in the game so they understand what it is that they're actually taking on. This is a public responsibility. This is a health concern.
You're over your three minutes, Michael. Try to wrap it up if you could.
I can, thank you.
Sure.
On a personal note, normally I don't bring up personal things, I have a niece that actually goes to NIU here. The next season that, that school starts, my daughter is going to be going to NIU. I guarantee in the timeframe that those ladies are here, the conversation of do I or do I not want a tattoo is going to come up. Am I going to want them to go to the two new applicants, or to the two applicants that have been around for decades who understand, who have the wherewithal, if there's a problem, they can handle it? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Robert Schall?
I'll pass.
You'll, you'll pass to Robert? Okay, thank you. Chris Siftilis? Is Chris still here?
I'm going to be left, sir.
Finally, Mark Doherty, you get a chance to address the council.
If Mr. Doherty will indulge me for a minute, can I make a suggestion that perhaps prior to Mr. Doherty speaking, if council would entertain passing this item for a few minutes and give Mr. Doherty, Mr. Stoddard, and I an opportunity to speak and see if we can, we were at a point in time where everyone agreed on the interpretation of the code, and I think the interests of both the applicants and the city are served by not litigating the meaning of the city code, but rather coming to some common understanding. If you'd, if you'd be so inclined to give it a few minutes, if we could get through the next agenda item, I'd be happy to-
So inclined.
...step out with them and see if we can talk this through.
So, so what are you asking us to do?
I'm asking to entertain passing on this item until after you consider item for second action G seven. So if we could have just a motion to delay consideration of G four until after item G seven.
May I have that motion to delay consideration of-
I'll make that motion.
G four?
I'll make the motion to delay the G four to, after G seven.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Fagan?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we delay this until after G seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have reserved time also to speak to the next item, which is the other tattoo, the other business.
And, Mr. Stoddard, would, would it address your concern to find that the other establishment is outside of the geographic limits, subject to the license numbers?
Roll call.
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
So we'll be revisiting this, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Should we go ahead then and, and consider number five?
Please.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash one five nine, approving a body art establishment license for Tal Tattoo LLC, two oh five South Third Street. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we move forward and approve this resolution, and Dean Frieders is going to speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second tattoo license that is before the council this evening. I want to be clear, our code defines an area where, as a central business district area that is limited to no more than two body art establishments. That area is bounded on the south side by Grove Street. This location is at two oh five South Third Street, which is on the south side of Grove Street, so it is not viewed as being subject to that limitation. It's immediately south of the demarcating line. So this does not have an impact on the consideration or discussions with respect to Out on a Wim and Mindful. This license is before the council. It has a negative recommendation. We do not recommend approval of it. There are a couple of reasons for that. First, city code prescribes a setback of one hundred feet between any proposed body art establishment and any church, school, hospital, home for the aged or indigent persons or for veterans, their wives or children, or any military or naval station. In this case, the proposed establishment is, whether you measure from property to property or from building to building, it is less than one hundred feet from the nearby church at the corner of Second Street and Grove Street. The second reason that we don't recommend approval of this, the applicant did go through a background review as a component of the license application. As indicated, there are components of tattoo licensure that require a high degree of professional judgment and skill. Our code specifically indicates that applicants are required to disclose convictions for certain offenses occurring within the past seven years. In this case, the applicant has a two thousand and seven conviction for driving under the influence and endangering the life or health of a child, and also unlawful possession of drug paraphernalia, a two thousand and nine conviction for battery, a two thousand and ten conviction for driving under the influence, a two thousand and twelve conviction for driving on suspended or revoked license that resulted in a jail sentence, and a two thousand and fourteen conviction for possession of marijuana. The two thousand and fourteen conviction for possession of marijuana is an offense that would be inconsistent with the reporting requirements applicable to this particular license application. Separately, the review, the city has a provision in city code that was adopted by the council within the past year that describes when a license evaluation or an applicant is being considered for license- considered for licensure, the factors that are supposed to be utilized, and among the factors applicable to the review of anything relating to a criminal background investigation is if there's any pattern or any consistent approach, if there are factors that indicate a lapse in judgment. In this case, the review was completed by the police department, and their conclusion was that because of not just the number of convictions, but the number of offenses over a protected period of time, over multiple years, from 2007 through 2014, that they were not comfortable making a positive recommendation for it. However, again, without regard to that background review issue, this application doesn't meet the minimum requirements of code with regard to setback to the adjacent church. So we recommend against approval of this license.
So while we have a motion on the floor and a second to the motion to approve the resolution approving the establishment of a license, what staff is recommending and police is recommending that we deny or we would vote no on this resolution.
That's correct.
Any further discussion by council? Alderman Norae Ko.
I recognize that there have been comments in terms of this applicant giving a second chance and so forth. However, I do defer to the judgment of the police department. It's difficult, and I recognize that, but they have shown in other instances their desire to work with people, work on situations. I don't think they're punitive or judgmental. I mean, obviously somewhat judgmental they need to be, but I don't think they're unnecessarily harsh. So while I, you know, regret that this store is, you know, may well be closed for you, I do, you know, defer to the judgment of the police.
Thank you, Alderman Norae Ko. Alderman Verbic?
If there was a different owner, could the person practice as an artist for that owner?
There is a requirement of disclosures of the actual body art artists working within the establishment, but in this case, the licenses applicable not just to the owner or operator of the establishment, but also to the premises, and this premises is not eligible for licensure under the current regulations because of the proximity to a church.
Alderman Verbic, yeah?
If the applicant's record would be clear, though, for a total of seven years, then would they likely receive support for this type of application? Not located next to a church, I understand, but in general.
So the most recent conviction in this case was from 2014, so that would be at least through 2021. I would defer to the chief if he has different comments, but I suspect that the response to the police department would be that any time a background investigation request is made, they evaluate it based on all information available at that time.
I would just add to that, that any situation like this, it places the police department to present information to the council for their ultimate decision. Each situation is on a case-by-case basis, and the circumstances vary usually quite differently from one to the next. Though, we, like Alderman Norae Ko said, it's not a position we enjoy being into to pass judgment, but we have to place this in the view of public safety. And from that perspective, that was why the negative recommendation came through in the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fanoukian.
Thank you. Dean, a point of clarification, please. I know that you mentioned that it was not in the central business district, but Alderman Jacobson and I are of belief that the business district goes to Grove, not just Franklin, according to the maps on the city website.
The definition in Chapter 67 is a specifically bounded geographic area, and this establishment is south of the southernmost defining line of that area.
And so you're saying that the line in the chapter says Grove and not Franklin because the maps all indicate that it's Franklin?
That is correct. It is bounded on the south by Grove Street, and this location is south of Grove Street.
Thank you.
And that's city code section 67.03, subparaphrase F.
And what zoning class would that then fall into?
It's not a zoning classification. It's a restriction specific to the body art establishment ordinance. So the references to the zoning code, those were not accurate. This isn't a zoning regulation. It's a limit on the number of tattoo licenses.
Okay, we had our questions answered. Again, a motion to approve. We do have a motion and a second, a vote to approve. Would be a yes vote that would approve the body art establishment license for Tal Tattoo. If we are following the recommendation of staff, it would be a no vote, in which case the license would not be approved. Roll call.
Jacobson.
I'm sorry, say that one more time. Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Can you make that comment one more time?
Yes.
A yes vote?
A yes vote indicates that we are approving the body art establishment license for Tal Tattoo, which counters what staff is recommending.
Thank you.
If you feel that staff's recommendation aligning with the police department makes sense, then you would vote no on this resolution. Is that correct? Roll call.
Alderman Jacobson. Fanoukian. Fagan.
No.
Norae Ko? Verbic?
No.
Favor? Six no.
Motion fails. Item number six, resolution number 2018-160, authorizing an agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute for the renewal of desktop software maintenance and online subscription services in an amount not to exceed $23,860. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman Verbic. With information on this is our IT Director, Mark Thorson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting tonight an agreement with what is more commonly known as ESRI or Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., for the renewal of geographic information system software. This is essentially what the city staff uses to create maps, itemizing any type of information that the city collects, and it also uses their online services to produce maps for the public use. Many may know that you can look up your zone, your ward, and other areas online on our city's website using this service. This is an annual agreement we presented every year, and the licensing and the terms have not changed from the prior year. This is a fiscal year 2019 budget item, so the beginning piece of this is January 1 of 2019, which is why we're presenting this today for contemplation and approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Mark.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norae Ko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
Okay, resolution number 2018-156, approving the cancellation of the December 26, 2018 Committee of the Hall and Regular Meeting of the City Council, and approving the payment of invoices for the second part of December prior to the January 14 regular meeting, 2019 regular meeting of City Council. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Norae Ko, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Speaking of this item is our Finance Director, Bob Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, as had been done in years past, this is recommending the approval of the cancellation of the Committee of the Hall and Regular Meetings of City Council on December 26. And if that meeting is canceled, for staff to continue to make the regularly scheduled bimonthly payments, to continue those in order to, like, continue to stay on top of payments, like debt service payments and other payments that would normally come during that time. Any questions?
Alderman Fanoukian.
Actually, not a question of you, Bob, but of Ray. Just a point of clarification for the residents, that we are planning a special meeting next week to do the second reading of the budget and a couple of other items, so that we're not really, I mean, we're moving the meeting up to the 18th, I guess is what I want to say, so all the business of the city will get taken care of. I just wanted that to be very clear.
That is correct, and thank you for pointing that out. So we do intend to call a special meeting of the City Council on December 18, and that meeting will essentially act in the place of the 26th meeting.
Thank you.
Satisfied then, Bill, that that accomplishes what you...
Yes, sir, not. I just wanted to make that very clear.
Okay, go ahead. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norae Ko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay, now we have what we moved, and that is, it will become G8, and that is approval of the 2019 schedule of meetings.
No, no, he's correct. Go ahead. Go ahead.
And who will address that? Excuse me. Approval of 2019 schedule of meetings, I'd entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If you recall, this is the item that was removed from the consent agenda to a separate item, and Ray Munch, speaking of this item, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I have the motion and approval, people?
Absolutely. It was approved, it was moved by Alderman Norae Ko, seconded by Alderman Fagan. And now for further clarification is Ray Munch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On an annual basis, in order to comply with the Open Meetings Act, the city publishes a schedule of all of its public meetings. Those meetings include meetings of the City Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, and other boards, committees, and commissions. Once that schedule is approved, it is published in the local newspaper, displayed at City Hall, as well as on the city's website. The schedule before you includes all of the regularly scheduled meeting dates, and then it provides, new this year, a list of prohibited special meeting dates. That was added this year to sort of assist staff in when we have a need to schedule a special meeting to avoid any complications with prohibited dates that are set forth due to holidays. I would like to point out, thank Alderman Fanoukian, there does appear to be one error in this schedule. The March meetings on this document are listed as March 13 and 26 for both the Committee of the Hall and the regular City Council meeting. Those should be accurately reflected as March 11 and 25. So we will make that change, but otherwise...
For what group was that?
For the month of March, for your Committee of the Hall and City Council meeting.
So instead of March 13 and 26?
It should be 11 and 25.
11 and 25, okay. And I take it this will be reprinted and reformulated so that we can print that off? Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, if you don't mind, I'd like to explain why I was at least one of the people who requested that this be...
Yes, please, thank you.
...considered separately. Number one, the memo said, promised that there could be public input, so that's one reason that I requested that. The second thing is, actually, an open meetings act consideration. The Open Meetings Act requires that public bodies hold meetings that are convenient to the public, that speaks to place, but it also speaks to time. A lot of residents that I've talked to over the years are, would be able to come to more meetings if the meetings were held a half an hour later, or even after that. So 5:00 PM is considered inconvenient for a lot of the public, as far as I've observed. The other part of that is, on the other end, we tend to have very long meetings at times. They run, you know, 10, 11 o'clock, maybe more often than that should happen. And there are a lot of ways to address that, capping the number of special presentations, capping the number of action items, setting some limits procedurally, things like that. But one of the things that could happen is that instead of having longer meetings, we have shorter agendas and have meetings more often. I'm just throwing that out there, but I do believe that that should be visited again.
Thank you for those comments. Any further comment from, and I do have a few comments, or at least a comment, Bill?
Yeah, I just want to talk about one of the issues that we had a couple of years ago, why we moved Cow to 5:00 was because of the late nights we were having even then. And 5:00 is after most residents' working hours, and again, with council starting at 6:00. With the amount of work that we've had to cover over the last couple of months of meetings, I would be hard-pressed to want to start the meetings any later than we already are.
Alderman Norae Ko.
I would second that comment, unless we could truly demonstrate that we could shorten the meetings. You know, it doesn't seem like much, you know, to move it a half hour, but, you know, that could potentially mean we're getting out, you know, 10:30, 11:00. And I'm also aware, you know, I'm tired, but, you know, staff has been here since, like, 8:00 in the morning, or, you know...
Off at early.
Sometimes earlier, you know. I don't know why they don't fall asleep at meetings, you know. But seriously, it would be really hard. And there are a lot of issues coming up. You know, what we might take a look at doing is, I know we've had some special Cow meetings devoted to, like, one topic. If we could, you know, kind of take a look at some of those special topic items and do them at a time of the year that we're away from, you know, budget preparation, because especially in the fall, and we've had... especially in the fall, and we've had, you know, multiple extra meetings, some of which last a while, and, you know, in addition to our prolonged council meetings. So, again, you know, perhaps this is something we could take a look at later in the spring, when the budget dust has settled.
Alderman Jacobson.
I remember my first council where meetings regularly went to midnight. It was less than ideal, and less than comfortable. It also gave rise, at the end of agendas, for things that otherwise should have gotten much more attention and consideration to be rushed through, and I think that was taken advantage of in some circumstances, whether by intentionally placing it that way, or just how it fell. And again, I remember my first council screaming, "We need more meetings, we need more meetings." We have them, we have way more meetings on our schedule now than we did in my first two years of service here, and I've appreciated that, as much as I've not appreciated it on some days, when I want to go out and do other things. But, again, we are part-time legislators, and are not even paid for that time that we're putting in now, to add more meetings to the schedule, or longer meetings, without a demonstrated need to do them. I mean, if we're in a situation, we must pass a budget, I can understand why you add special meetings. If you have things come up like we need to on the 18th, that are demonstrated need days, we have to be here, we've all made that effort, and we've all made that commitment to be here. Beyond that, unless you want to be here a couple of days a week, I wouldn't recommend adding more meetings to a calendar right now.
Any further discussion? My comment was basically that, you know, this summer, we did have a meeting, or a COW, devoted expressly to meetings. And at that time, consensus from this council was that, while many of the points that have been brought up here over the last five minutes were indicated, like, number of meetings and length of meetings, we felt that, for the most part, we were moving along, you know, fairly well. And so, I appreciate the suggestion that we, that we consider that, and let's just hope that we, as staff, and we as council, and even our boards and commissions, can be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we want meetings that, you know, start on time, end at a decent hour, and, you know, will work hard to see that. I mean, we are here to serve the citizens of the city of DeKalb. But as Dave suggests, the number of meetings, I think, and the suggestion that we meet more often, perhaps flies in the face of what we really are equipped to do at this point, as part-time, would you call us legislators?
Part-time legislators.
Legislators, yes, okay. Okay, any further discussion? Lynn, thank you for that suggestion. Roll call, please.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes. Okay, we're going to revisit G4, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, and that is, let me read that again, once again, resolution 2018-158, approving a body art establishment license for Mindful Tattoo, 625 East Lincoln Highway. Do we need another motion?
If you'd allow me to explain for just a moment, I think we're going to recommend an alternate motion.
Sure.
In speaking with both applicants, they are obviously separating, or have separated their business. They do both wish to do business in the city of DeKalb. They do both wish to have an application before the council for consideration of licensure of their respective premises. They feel from their respective positions that, as shown by the Tall Tattoo License that was here tonight, that license could very well have been approved, had it not been subject to the church setback, and it is closer geographically to the existing Out on a Wim establishment than the proposed Mindful Tattoo is, because of the unique geographic configuration of the restrictions in Chapter 67. What we are recommending to council, what we're requesting, is that you postpone consideration of, to borrow the term from our clerk here, postpone consideration of item G4 to be meeting on December 18th. At that point in time, we would anticipate returning with a public hearing regarding the consideration of Out on a Wim's license with their change in ownership and change in artists, consideration of a potential change in the number of tattoo licenses permitted within this defined geographic area, and consideration at that time of the Mindful Tattoo application. If the council doesn't have an objection to having three establishments in that area, then there's no conflict between them. If the council does have an objection to having three establishments in that area, then we'll have both licenses here, and the council can make a determination regarding the appropriate disposition at that time.
So what you're suggesting is, we will have a public hearing on Out on a Wim, and we would have this resolution being brought back for Mindful Tattoo, and a similar resolution for approval on Out on a Wim.
And we would also have an ordinance contemplating an update to Chapter 67 to increase the number of licenses permitted.
Okay. Do I have consensus from council that that makes sense?
Yes. We would have to take an action, correct?
So, we would ask for a motion to postpone until December 18th.
Right, right.
Isn't there not a motion on the floor already that would need to be withdrawn?
The motion to postpone would take preeminence over it.
Thank you.
Motion to postpone until the December 18th agenda.
Okay, motion by Alderman Jacobson, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Fagan.
Mr. Stiles from Rockford.
Yes, sir.
Would you please get up? I've got a question for you, or, just over here, fine. When you were up originally, you talked about sales tax.
Yes, sir.
And sales tax, you felt that wasn't being paid properly, and that-
I'm 100% sure of that.
You're 100% sure of that. And so, what I would like to do, and this is coming out of Out on a Wim partnership, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How do we make sure, because the cat's out of the, you know, it's out of the bag now, that you're saying this, so, I'm feeling that the city of DeKalb is not getting its sales tax from that business.
I concur.
Okay. How are we going to straighten this out? Because I don't want, I wanted to help the accountant, because he might not be here coming up the 18th, but I want this be brought out, and do we, are we able to do an audit? Or what can we do? That's my question.
This is not a city-imposed tax, so it's not one of the code, like, for our R&amp;B tax, for example, we have a requirement that, in paying the tax, that the city can do an audit. We don't have a code specific to this, that the city could do an audit. However, the consequences of the Department of Revenue doing an audit are far more significant than any local regulations that we have. My suggestion would be that this is an issue, a liability, that is, at this point in time, with the licensee, with Out on a Wim, and if it relates to their past business operations, is something we will need to resolve with them. If they have some internal control issue, they need to resolve that, but if they have a failure to report sales tax, that's something that we will have to work with them on. I would reach out to Mr. Stoddard and try and resolve that before the 18th.
Yeah, and, you know, the thing is, because it was brought up in public, and whose fault it is, I mean, if my business partner didn't pay, and I, and I was business partner, and I'd have to pay, whatever, but it should be, it could be a way of making our decision on where we want to go on the 18th also.
Alderman Verbic.
And none of us, perhaps, being here, the logic of restricting the number of tattoo body art parlors in the Central Business District. Can you speak to that?
This-
Why the restriction?
It was an ordinance that was passed in 2009. From the review that I've been able to conduct on available information, it looks like it was an effort to kind of prevent the Central Business District. Essentially, if you look at it, it's Lincoln Highway, and very close proximity to that, from becoming just a strip of tattoo parlors or body art establishments. I can tell you that, in reviewing this code, and as both Mr. Doherty and Mr. Stoddard alluded to, there are updates that we would recommend making. I'm not proposing to delude you with those at your December 18th meeting, but we would be returning it early in 2019. In this case, we will return an action item if the council passes your currently pending motion to consider increasing the number from two to three. If the council later date chooses to eliminate it altogether, or pass other amendments to Chapter 67, that would certainly be within your province.
Thank you.
Alderman Favor.
So, I'm glad to hear that we're going to review that, because one of the things I was going to bring up is, the reason we're in the situation we have, that the two license limit, but they're, Out on a Wim, their license hasn't expired yet, and as stated by their attorney, they're planning to renew, so technically, a license isn't available until after December 15th. Isn't that correct?
The license approval resolution that was contemplated for Mindful Tattoo tonight indicates that it doesn't take effect until January 1st. The position that the city has taken with respect to Out on a Wim's existing license is the same position the city took with respect to that license in 2016, and it's the position we took after extensive discussions with multiple sets of attorneys representing Out on a Wim, that because of the change in ownership, it is not merely a renewal of the license, it's a new license. Again, when they had a change in ownership in 2016, we had a public hearing, and it came before council for consideration. We're taking that same approach here. To read the ordinance in any other way would be to completely obviate the purpose of the background check, the disclosure of ownership, the disclosure of all the parties interested in the business. So, we don't think that's a consistent interpretation with the requirements of the statute separately. Based on the very preliminary feedback we had from the Department of Public Health, I don't think that's consistent with the approach that the state takes on the state body art establishment license, but I believe we're going to present this to you in a way on the 18th that likely obviates the dispute over that.
Okay, it just says, you know, I'm not a business owner, but as a business owner, under those terms, that's, it's a little tenuous, that you, your license that you have, I know, I realize there's a change of ownership which necessitates the scrutiny of the changes, but, yeah, any other business to, that you would potentially lose a license at the end of the year like that-
And that-
-would be concerning.
So, for any of our more heavily regulated enterprises, for tobacco license, for liquor license, a change in ownership triggers a new license. And there are very, very limited exceptions to that for tobacco licenses, for some grandfathering. With respect to this code, again, it's not drafted in the way that many of our updated codes are, and we can certainly improve that. But reading it in a different way would obviate many of the provisions of the code. With respect to all of our licenses, there are obligations of licensure that if you don't satisfy, you can lose your license at the end of the term. In the case of, you know, rooming house licenses, for example, the inspections come at a period in time during the term of your license, and if you don't correct violations discovered, or if you don't schedule the inspection, you can lose your license through that process, and that can have zoning impacts and all sorts of secondary effects. So, licensure is something that, there are significant concerns surrounding, that we follow the timelines very closely. That's why, in this case, we've been very proactive to talk with the Schalls' attorneys, their previous attorneys, and their current attorneys, and with Mr. Doherty and his client, in an effort to try and prevent us from having this standoff this evening. So, we're now trying to find another path to resolution that gives the council some options.
Thank you.
May I answer the councilman's question on how to rectify the situation?
Sure.
It's actually quite easy. Filing an amended sales tax return with the correct location would fix that. It is a quite easy fix, which I was barred from making, so, that's my resignation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Jacobson.
To be clear, I was on the council that created this ordinance effectively. Prior to the ordinance, we did not allow tattoo parlors in DeKalb, period. Not just in the CBD, period. It wasn't allowed within DeKalb city limits. And I think, again, much like with gaming, the worry was, in opening it up, Wild West, that we'd get a flood of applicants that would show up looking to open up pop-up shops in DeKalb. Clearly, that didn't ever occur, and again, I think the reasonable regulation of two was because we had two preliminary applicants that were pushing the change in the law for the city of DeKalb. Both of them were licensed, both of them got their licenses, and are continuing to operate with both Out on a Wim and Proton. So, again, if the decision is to increase that licensing, I think that's a valid conversation, but it was done intentionally to ensure Lincoln Highway didn't become Tattoo Row. As one of those fears, when you're opening up a new door, what's going to rush in? So, it was done intentionally, it was done to slow the process down. It's been almost 10 years now. If it's time to appropriately review it, because other businesses are asking, I don't have an issue with that, and I think it's a very valid discussion we should have.
We appreciate your historical perspective that you bring to this, David, and among others. And of course, I must correct you, young man, that it isn't a tattoo parlor, it's a body art establishment. But how far we have come in a relatively short period of time? You know, 15 years ago, if you went to a wedding and you saw a bareback woman with a tattoo, you'd say, "Oh, my God, what is going on?" But now, it is, you know, it's more commonplace, we accept it, you know? You know, 20 years ago, when my son came home with an earring in his ear, my wife about had a conniption. You know, and so, you know, things change and all that, and I think what we're being asked to do now is to postpone this. And consuls, Doherty and consuls, Stoddard, are you satisfied, after having a conversation with Dean, that we're headed in the right direction? Do either of you want to make any comment at this point?
I think Dean summarized it well. My only comment would be, and I understand you would do this, is to not pass judgment on some of the things you're hearing, including from Mr. Stiles. There are things to be said on both sides of that.
Okay. We're going to try to be open and, you know, sure. Okay, we are clear then, that what we're asking now is to postpone the resolution 2018-158. Until when was that, Dean?
December 18th.
December 18th. There has been a motion on the floor, there is a second. Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, now we go to two items under new or unfinished business. H1 is request for proposals for plumbing inspection services. Again, we do not approve these, per se, we simply will hear some explanation, and with this is our Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor stated, the purpose of this agenda item is to advise council of the need to seek proposals to provide plumbing inspection services by a third-party contractor in calendar year 2019. As most of you are aware, our past has involved the use of HR Green for both our building plan review and inspections, and our plumbing inspections. Last year, council approved, as cost balancing measures, then, the transfer of the contractual building plan review and inspector to a full-time plan review and inspector, which was recently hired in September of this year. HR Green is a company that is located in an area that has contractors who don't live close to the area, so, for them to provide the part-time plumbing inspections, a couple of hours, on a couple of days a week, proved to be something that they weren't willing to do if they didn't have our full-time plan review and inspector on service. So, once we hired that position, they put us on notice that they were no longer willing to provide us with that service. To continue providing that service, in the interim, we needed to contract with a firm, and we filled that role through the end of this calendar year, and then a little bit more if we need to, under the city manager's spending authority. more if we need to, under the city manager's spending authority of $20,000. Moving forward into 2019, though, we will need to approve a contract with the firm that would be able to provide that service all year long. So the RFP document that's provided in your packet for your information, it would be distributed this month, actually tomorrow. We would expect to receive responses back by December 19th, review those responses, and then try to make a decision and recommendations to bring back to the council for consideration at your first meeting in January. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Any questions of Joellen on this? So we're simply asked, we're going to get the RFP, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
H2, tax increment financing, District 2 expiration. Once again, Jason Mitchnick, and we do have one speaker in the audience, Steve Capitan, who would like to speak to this item after Jason's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So the discussion before council this evening is based on the action that was taken at the previous meeting in direction of council two staff to return with the discussion on how to handle the expiration of TIF 2. So TIF 2 is one of the existing TIF districts, and just to provide kind of an overview of how I'd like to present this discussion, I'm going to go over kind of where we're at currently, update you on some assumptions. So we made a couple of corrections from what was presented the last meeting after further discussion on an interpretation of the TIF Act, and then provide the two options to council, as well as the projects that you had requested us to return with, and then I'll turn it over to you for discussion. The one thing that I do request is that, and state is that it is absolutely critical that council provide very clear direction to us on how to move forward this evening. With only one meeting left in the rest of the year, we need to make sure that we have the adequate action items prepared for council to vote on at the next meeting. As I stated, the TIF 2 is one of the existing TIF districts. It was approved via ordinance 95-26, so 2018 does mark the 23rd maximum under the TIF Act for the life of that TIF. At the September meeting last year, when we were discussing various options, one of them that we had presented was a possible extension of TIF 2. At the time, council was not in favor of that, so we didn't take the action required to extend that. So therefore, December 31st of 2018 would be the statutory expiration of TIF 2. The estimated fund balance at the end of this year, this fiscal period, in TIF 2 is going to be approximately $9.7 million, which is based on, we do have our final revenues in for the year, but there are still some outstanding expenses. I've done my best to project where those are going to land, but that month, that number may ultimately change depending on what final invoices come in here for FY '18. And that fund balance does also assume that the previous transfer that the council did approve via budget amendments to TIF 1, which is the central area TIF, which was just under $3.4 million, would be reversed via action depending on council's direction. That would either be a full reversal or some other number, which we'd bring back. It is necessary for the city to take action to designate the remaining funds prior to the expiration, or the remaining fund balance will be declared as surplus as a default. Want to make that very, very clear. If no action is taken before the end of the year by council to designate the use of the fund balance that is not required to be declared as a surplus, that will automatically by default be surplussed out to the other taxing districts. So one of the questions that came up was the 36-month provision in the TIF Act and why that had not been brought up previously. This was something that after Attorney Frieders took on more of the overview of the TIF that we caught in our discussions, our previous TIF council that we had, we used on a very kind of a case-by-case basis, when we had a specific technical question, we would call and ask for direction and interpretation on the TIF Act. I think that the overview of everything that was going on with the TIF, with that structure led to a couple of lapses in areas, this being one of them. So this is the provision in the TIF Act that talks about 36 months of revenues and what the city is required to do if they want to keep more than that. So the first sentence in here is what I want to highlight, which is any funds which have not been designated for use in a specific development project in the annual report shall be designated as surplus. And if you look back at TIF 2 reports over the years, there is a section, Section 3.3, in which you designate or you include a description of costs to be expelled in future fiscal periods. And the city did in those annual reports include estimates for projects. So this is two, I took that section from two reports, so this is FY 2013 and 2015. You can see in FY 2015, we actually included a transfer to the central area TIF, an amount of a little over $8 million. And so that's a discussion that councils had repeatedly over the years, as indicated by this annual report, is that they had the intention of transferring funds from TIF 2 into TIF 1 at some point prior to its expiration. However, the second sentence in this clause states that in order to keep more than 36 months of receipts from the date of receipt, you have to have contractual obligations for specific development projects. So as we went back and looked at the annual reports and then looked at what actions the council had taken in those years, they had never done the second part of this clause, which was actually designating a use for those that were contractual obligations. So stating it in the annual report that it's an intent was not enough, in our opinion and interpretation of the TIF Act, for us to say that we could keep that money beyond the 36 months. So looking at that clause and going back the previous 36 months of receipts, these are the receipts that we got in FY 2018, 17, and 16.5, which total a little over $4.1 million. So based on the estimated TIF 2 fund balance at the end of this fiscal period, and subtracting that 4.1 out, the estimated minimum surplus that we would be required to declare and return back to the other taxing districts per that provision in the TIF Act is a little over $5.6 million. And that's calculated, and then again, that's the estimate based on the fund balance at the end of this year. So the actual minimum surplus would be calculated once we have the final revenue figure and expense figures in the budget for the end of this year. So that leaves us with what are the remaining funds in TIF 2? So if you look at that 36 months of receipts, the 4.1, and you add our, whatever revenues that we get in FY 2019 in TIF 2, although it expires in, at the end of this year, it's actually, the final receipts are the following year. So it's taxes levied in the 23rd year, so we levy taxes for next year, so we would collect those. So we're estimating those to be approximately $1.5 million, so that gets us up to that $5.6 million. So based on our interpretation that even though we have designated funds in a previous transfer from TIF 2 to TIF 1 earlier this year, we also have available fund balance now in TIF 1 projected to cover those expenses. So some of those projects that we had brought forward either got delayed for various reasons. There's a lot of projects that had been put into the budget for FY 2018 in TIF that never went forward. We now look, we now look at our estimate for fund balance in 2018 and 2019 for those projects, and there are sufficient funds in order for us to cover those projects. Therefore, the most conservative interpretation is that that previous transfer was not warranted, and we therefore would need to reverse it, and that's where we get the 5.6. So the policy question for council to discuss this evening is what should the city do with the remaining fund balance in TIF 2 that is not required to be declared as the minimum surplus? So what should the city do with that 5.6 million? And there's really two options at this point with the amount of time that we have left. One is that we can look at designating the remaining funds, so that in order to do that, we would have to return with funding agreements that could be approved via resolution on December 18th at the special meeting that are equal to or greater than the 5.6 million and available in TIF 2 fund balance at the end of next year, or alternatively, approve a lesser amount for specific projects, and the balance of the 5.6 would be declared as surplus in addition to the minimum. I'd also like to note that any approved expenditure would be in full compliance with the TIF Act. So the city taking action to invest the remaining fund balance and designate that funding would be in full compliance with the TIF Act, and designating those funds don't have an impact on historic use of TIF related to the conversations that we have been having with the other taxing districts and their concerns. So looking at the two options, I think it's important for city council to weigh the benefit and merit of investing TIF funds as they are intended to be, or looking at the merits and the benefit of declaring the remaining 5.6 as surplus, with the caveat being that when we invest those funds in specific projects, we're able to calculate a return on investment for those funds, whereas it can be very difficult when you're looking at the alternative. The second option here would be to declare a maximum surplus. So this would be looking at all the available fund balance, both at the end of this year and the revenues for next year, and declaring all of it surplus. And again, the default obligation, if no further action is taken by council between now and December 31st, would be option two, and that we would be required to declare a surplus in the amount of $11.28 million, or whatever our final receipts and fund balance are. If you do decide to go with option two, we would, we would be required to do a budget amendment to reverse the previous transfer, as I had mentioned, both from TIF 1 and the general fund. We'd already said that, and included that in the draft budget, that the previously approved 2018 TIF transfers to the general fund were going to be reduced down to about $160,000. So that would actually be, need to happen via budget amendment by, which we would bring back at the following meeting. So looking at the projects and the direction that we got at the last council meeting was to return with projects that staff felt were viable and had merit that we could approve by the end of the year in a form that would obligate those funds. So based on project readiness, Marriott, and the previous direction and conversations, not just from our last meeting, but we've been having a conversation about TIF for more than a year now, so all of those conversations, desire to maximize return on investment, everything that's played into those conversations and direction from council has led to us making a recommendation for four projects in a package that would be equal to that $5.6 million that's available in TIF 2. The first project being the Egyptian Theater expansion and installation of air conditioning at a project, or at a TIF request of $2.5 million. And I'd also like to point out that these are projects too that, for the most part, have been discussed publicly at some point, so these aren't projects that we're just kind of coming out of nowhere with. These are, with the exception of renovations at 241 and 249, it's a little bit different based on the situation. We weren't able to publicly disclose that until this evening, but it fits well within the merits of the projects that council's approved over the last couple of years. The second project is the redevelopment of 145 Fisk. Earlier this year, the proposed developers for the redevelopment of that site came and gave a presentation on what they would like to do, renovating that, the old St. Mary's Hospital into a approximately 40-room boutique hotel that has some event space, some commercial tenant spaces, including a rooftop bar and improvements to the site. At that time, it was estimated that they would be requesting $2 million in TIF. However, they've done some preliminary engineering on that site and think that their costs are going to be higher, especially when they address some of the concerns that we had about flow into the site and access to the site. Therefore, we're recommending an increase incentive from $2 to $2.5 million to make sure that they're able to meet those expectations that the city's going to have in order to approve that project. And they stated that the other project here is the renovation and rehab of 241 and 249 East Lincoln Highway. The current owner of Hometown was leasing the property at 241 for several years. Earlier this year, he approached the city because he was interested in purchasing that building and making some improvements to it. The second floor of 241 has been unoccupied and vacant for a number of years. I believe it was never finished out when the previous owner had done the renovations when the city provided a facade grant. And at that time, the neighboring property at 249 became available and went on the market, and he was interested in also purchasing that. So he is interested in expanding his business, so Hometown would go into 249, and they would be putting in a stage for live music, as well as building out a deck behind the building on 249 in between the rear of the building and the alleyway in Palmer Court, and also rehabbing some uninhabitable apartment units above that building as well. So you'd be adding higher-end apartments to the downtown, something that city council has approved over the last couple of years with other projects, as well as doing a facade improvement to 249 to match what exists on 241, continuing to improve the streetscape along Lincoln Highway. The fourth project here, while it's not a private investment, we looked at all the other available projects and their readiness, and didn't have anything that would fit in with the remaining funds that didn't have a lot of obstacles and weren't going to have an agreement that was loaded with contingencies. So we looked at infrastructure projects and which one would provide the greatest benefit and wouldn't be considered just a standard maintenance project, and came up with installation of fiber optic in the central business district that would include the installation of security cameras, and that project would allow for, to serve as the backbone for future technology as well. Alternatively, council can discuss these projects, determine that this isn't the list of projects that you would like to see and discuss an alternative, understanding, though, that the challenge being that those projects in any direction that you give to staff, we need to make sure that it's a viable project, that we can actually contractually obligate the funds by the end of the year. So to go a little bit further into each one of these projects, the Egyptian Theater is something that we've discussed, I think as the mayor put it, ad nauseam over the years in terms of putting air conditioning in this building. This is a conversation that isn't new to the city, this is something that council's been discussing for years and years. In addition to the HVAC that they would be installing, they would also be doing an expansion to their existing bathrooms and concessions. If you've ever been to the Egyptian, when it's a sold-out show, there are not adequate facilities to handle as many patrons as can be seated, so they would be handling that with the expansion. And then the increase to concession would also allow them to generate more operating revenue for themselves. When they do have shows that serve alcohol, they're using an outside vendor to do that for them through a catering license, so they would be able, they would be applying for a liquor license of their own, and they'd be able to generate that revenue themselves rather than having that revenue go to a caterer. So the total project cost is estimated currently, pre-engineering, at about $4 million, and the TIF request is $2.5 million, and this is what was presented to council several times in past conversations. And the $2.5 million is based on the cost of the air conditioning. They did an engineering study several years back, and they've inflated that cost based on CPI to get the $2.5 million. And we wanted to make sure that we had a conversation about return on investment, because we want to make sure that you can properly discuss and weigh the benefits and merits and, you know, what is the best for the public good in using the remaining funds. And with the Egyptian Theater, it's always been challenging specifically on how you're going to measure those return on investment with some of the other projects that we've looked at, such as Cornerstone Plaza. We can calculate the tax generation very specifically, and we've always looked at tax generation as kind of our indicator for return on investment, but we've also heard time and time again that the Egyptian Theater is the economic driver for the downtown. And having seen the progress that they've made with programming and talked to downtown business owners and them stating that they see an increase in business, something that we've always been able to hear anecdotally, but had a greater challenge in calculating. However, when you look at how the arts are calculated, Americans for the Arts put together a, I think it's the Arts and Prosperity Calculator, but that's something that's backed up by academic research in how they, how they indicate what an investment in the arts and what the return on investment is, is based on that. So using that calculator, the current economic impact- So, using that calculator, the current economic impact is a little over $2.1 million. And, if they were to install the air conditioning and move to a year-round programming schedule, that would go up to about $3.2 million, so you're over $1 million of increased economic impact by them moving to a year-long schedule, which allows 45 more events per year and approximately 14,000 more patrons coming to those shows. And, in the backup for you for this item was a link to their website, which had several letters of support, that included from those downtown restaurants and business owners that state specifically what I had said. I think another one that I wanted to point out too was a letter from, a gentleman from Americans for the Arts that talks specifically about that calculator. And, I'd like to remind council too that when we did the Barlow Study, staff had conducted a survey at Egyptian Theater events, asking patrons what they spent when they came to that event, and calculated a per-patron spending with that survey. And, the American for the Arts study on Illinois said that the average is about $35 per patron that goes to an event, and the city survey indicated $38 per patron. So, that's pretty close to what that calculator is showing, that there is some validity to that calculator for return on investment. Moving on to the 145 Fisk project, as I stated, this is a redevelopment of the old St. Mary's Hospital into a 40-room boutique hotel with the event space. There was a computer rendering that was provided at the time of that, so they would be doing these glass atriums outside, as well as on the rooftop. Based on the updated estimate for project costs, it's about $7.8 million, and the TIF request would be $2.5 million. This one, because it's a commercial project, it's easier for us to look at return on investment, specifically looking at tax generation though. So, with the property tax bill currently being a little over $4,000 for the 2017 tax year, we estimated that post-stabilized value would result in somewhere between a $44 and $62,000 tax bill annually. And then the estimated hotel motel tax, which is based on a 65% occupancy, at $119 per room night would be about $80,000. And that, when you look at what the economic impact is, not just the tax generation to the city, that's over $1 million of revenue and people's spending for hotel nights. And then when you look at the sales tax from the commercial tenant spaces and the R&amp;B tax, things like that, going beyond just looking at tax generation for ROI, but what the actual economic impact, what is the investment of TIF dollars into projects like this going to result in the overall local economy, is very substantial. In addition to just the fiscal benefit of this project to the city, you also have a blighted property in residential neighborhood. The renovation of that would potentially increase the property values for surrounding homes and apartments. And it is a historic building that has some significance to the community. Talked to several people that were born in that hospital, so seeing it turned into something viable and not being knocked down, there is value to that too. If you look at some of the other projects, such as the 211 North First, the Dory Project, council is in favor of using TIF for historic preservation, so this fits well. I think when we presented this, I heard pretty unanimous consensus from council that, in your opinion, this checked all the boxes when it came to TIF projects, that you're redeveloping a blighted property, you're doing historic preservation, there's significant ROI, all of that. It went over the 241 and 249 East Lincoln Highway project, so you have the apartments and the expansion of Hometown. Because this is a specific business, and it's one business, I didn't include a sales tax projection for this, based on the conversation that we've had about the reciprocal agreement. But, this would fall under Chapter 37, if council does move to approve that in the future, that we would be required to do that annual performance tracking. And, the, looking at this, this falls well within the guidelines of the recapture period that we've looked at for other projects too, without giving you specific figures. It's also rehabilitating another historic building that needs it, especially 249 in the downtown, improving the streetscape, and increasing the amenities that are available. So, the whole idea for the downtown, that we're trying to build a market, you're trying to have daytime and nighttime population, one of the ways that you make an area more livable is by providing these types of amenities, more entertainment options, more places to go out with friends and family, get something to eat. The last project, the fiber optic and security cameras, that would be installing fiber along Lincoln Highway and then branching out from that in the CBD and installing security cameras. It also allowed us to improve the public Wi-Fi system, the free public Wi-Fi system that we're already currently offering. It would allow us to look at installing future smart grid technologies and interactive information kiosks in the downtown. So, this one isn't going to have your, it's not going to generate tax directly, this is another one where you're going to have spin-off economic benefits. But the increased amenities such as public Wi-Fi and safety could lead to increased traffic or making it a more desirable place to live, lead to economic development opportunities in the future. In addition, security cameras would improve the ability for police to identify safety concerns before they're arriving to a situation, so there's value in that. And then cameras also could act as a deterrent for illegal behavior in general. And then fiber, as I mentioned, could serve as a backbone for future technologies such as charging stations, parking and traffic sensors, and that's smart grid technology that I didn't mention. So, again, the policy direction that we absolutely have to have tonight is whether council should provide staff with direction on specific projects, if any, and which ones should return with funding agreements to the December 18 meeting for consideration for approval. And, your options again are, one, direct us to return with specific funding agreements, or to direct us to prepare the second reading of the budget for next year with a maximum surplus and return with a budget amendment for this year's fiscal period to reverse the transfer to TIF I and the general fund. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Before we have discussion with the council, Steve Capitan wants to keep within his three-minute limit and make a few comments.
Let me know if I don't.
I just wanted to briefly address some of the projects. With regard to the Egyptian Theater, the council has talked in the past about the need for the Egyptian to move toward independent viability. It seems to me that without the upgrades to make this a modern facility, that that independent viability is not going to be possible. The ability to operate year-round season is a major part of that. Regarding the ROI question, I think in this case, we have to look at the overall impact, economic development impact on the downtown, and Jason referenced some of that. I support this project. In principle, I'm opposed to including the purchase price of property in the calculation of percentages of the city incentives. I think that distorts the market, whether this is proactively or retroactively. And I question, is 145 Fisk proposal, does that do that? But then, at the same time, regarding that the infrastructure shouldn't be considered a part of their project, because that's a city infrastructure improvement to make the private property viable. One other thing about the 145 Fisk, the rooftop bar proposal, I think needs to be considered. Concern about that needs to be that this is a residential neighborhood, and I don't know how well that would fly. Doesn't seem to be too compatible. I know that that is a building that needs to be dealt with, but we also have to keep in mind of where it is. On the fiber optic, I think that's a plus for the downtown generally. That's, again, that's an example of the independent arc or infrastructure that I was talking about in reference to the restrictions. That's something I don't think that, to use the term that David brought up, was the tying the hands. I mean, if we passed the restrictions, wouldn't this be an independent infrastructure project? And in this case, it's an improvement. And I think, but I do agree that it should be restricted against it being relied upon by the city for ongoing maintenance of infrastructure. And how you separate that, I think, is the challenge you face. Thank you.
Well, within three minutes, Stephen. Thank you. Okay, Jason is at the podium, and he's asking that we give him somewhat clearer direction than what we've been able to do over the last several months, as it relates to these projects. And, from what I hear you saying, is if we do have another option, we can do nothing, and we then get the funds in default, and they would go into full surplus, right?
If no action is taken.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
My recommendation though is if that's the intent of council, be very specific in your intent to do so.
Oh, I hear you. I hear you. Okay. Alderman Fanouk.
Jason, I think you've outlined some very good projects. I know the Fisk project was something I think that we were all very receptive to when they were here and presented it. I'm interested in the Hometown project. The Egyptian has been one of those things, it's been, you know, obviously, I think we've talked about air conditioning at the Egyptian every year I've been on council. I think this is the time we go ahead and do it. I think that, as we all know, it's an economic generator for downtown and for town itself. And, I think that I'd be very interested in hearing at least more detail on those three projects, and I would also entertain listening to the fiber, so.
Entertain, what was that last one, Bill?
Listening to the fiber.
Oh, okay, good. Alderman Norrico.
The Egyptian, I think, we encourage them to demonstrate some energy and vigor with their programming, and they stepped up to that, and we recognize that. It would be wonderful to see what they could accomplish with year-round facility. So, and I too remember, even in only four years, frequent discussions about the Egyptian. So, I would be strongly in favor of that. The Grill, the 141, 149 Lincoln property, that's a relatively modest amount, given some of the figures we've been tossing around. And, once again, it's someone who's already in the downtown, who's willing to invest in the downtown, so I think that should be encouraged. The hotel, while I like the concept, I have some concerns about, you know, how specific they are, how far along they are in their plans, and, you know, the track record of the people coming forward. The fiber optics, that feels a lot like infrastructure to me. It feels like something that was kind of grabbed to, you know, I mean, I realize there's viability to it, but if I were ranking the projects, that would probably be on the bottom.
Alderman, favor.
I would agree with Alderman Norrico.
Yes.
I think the Egyptian Theater, I think that's one that, again, we've kicked it around, we've talked about it, we've done studies. I think it's, the team at the Egyptian Theater, they've shown that they're willing to step up, and they're bringing in more programming options and different shows and things like that. I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of the Hometown, the fiber optic, I'm still on the fence about. And then the, I guess my question about Fisk Avenue, if, do we have a timeline? Or, here's another question. I guess just if we earmark the $2.5 million for their project, and let's say their project either gets delayed or permanently delayed or taken off the table, what happens at that point? Does the money then get distributed? Or what is the, what's the consequences of designating a project that doesn't come to fruition?
I think there's ways that we could structure the funding agreement to keep that project viable, potentially looking at designating those funds, and if for some reason the proposed developer is unable to execute, we could have allowed that agreement and funding to be transferred to a new developer at the approval of council. To answer your question about what happens if for some reason that just becomes a no-go and that too much time passes, my interpretation is that the city would be obligated to declare that as surplus.
Okay.
I would defer to Attorney Frieders if you have anything else to add to that, or...
Yeah, I would definitely concur with that. If you reach a point in time at which it's clear the project is not going to go forward, then that funding would no longer be earmarked, it'd be past the point of the TIF having expired or the estimated date of completion, it would be paid out of surplus at that time. On the point about infrastructure, the narrow point that we wish to make, if you look at both what was being discussed with other taxing districts with regard to the IGA and what's in Chapter 37, the definition of, or what has been objected to with regard to infrastructure is, the classic project that's been objected to is street repaving for an existing street. So, in the regulations that we drafted, it contemplates that kind of maintenance activity where you're replacing an old water main or replacing, repaving a street. As we looked at this, I mean, the city could come up with $5.5 million of street repavement or water main replacement in TIF II and expend the entire funds. We were looking at projects that were not that kind of traditional maintenance project and that would have the greatest impact. What we regularly hear from council with respect to challenges in the central business district are concerns about crime, are concerns about connectivity, are concerns about making that a viable commercial space. And so, we were looking at ways of providing the most transformative impact on those issues. And you can talk about things like street lighting that change the atmosphere, talking about having the ability to actually implement safety cameras in that area and be able to have the benefit of those. As we talk about, you know, crimes that have occurred in the central business district over the past year or several years, and trying to identify where suspects have gone or what has happened or who the perpetrator of a given offense was, if you compare that to a crime that occurs in proximity to security cameras, and the number of crimes that our police department solves through their dedicated detective and investigative work and the cooperation of property owners with cameras, we felt that that was the kind of thing that really could have a transformative impact in addressing the light conditions that exist and being really truly consistent with the purpose of TIF, in addition to providing the fiber backbone that provides a lot of the secondary benefits.
Alderman Jacobson.
What are remaining bond liabilities out there look like for the TIF fund?
Off the top of my head, it's, I hate to speculate, I know it's, I want to say it's like a $1.2 million payment annually. I assume you saw that last sentence in that clause, that a year after retire obligations first. I had thought that too, but we were very specific when we issued those, issued the bonds related to TIF, that the funding source was the central area TIF district. So, the ability to take TIF II funds and designate that towards bonds in TIF I when we call out that as the funding source, we didn't feel like that was a viable option.
And there's no other projects we could put on the list effectively and earmarking by calling it AIP or anything else, but I'd like to see at least some effect made when we talked about AIP just a couple of months ago here, to go... we talked about AIP just a couple of months ago here, to go to the resound, to the overwhelming number of buildings that have significant deterioration issues downtown. When you're talking these projects, again, I would agree with most of them in light of taking it into the perspective of use it or lose it at this point. Is there any way we can designate it, even for the year, to go out and make an effort coming into the spring to go out and try to attract some private investment from building owners to get some of those blight issues taken care of?
I think you would potentially run afoul of the idea that it has to be a specific project that's contractually obligated. Designate it towards a program, I don't think would meet the merits of the TIF Act that state that you have to obligate it, especially since you'd be looking at a transfer from TIF II to TIF I. The idea that you have something built into the redevelopment plan is, if it was TIF II, it might be a different story, but I think based on the availability of projects and that the AIP largely would be looking at properties that are in TIF I, we need to be very specific and obligate those contractually. I think the contractual obligation is where my biggest concern would be with that approach.
Alderman Verbig.
First and foremost, exceptional work, Dean and staff. Dean correcting former attorneys' errors and recognizing the challenges that we have in the short amount of time. Jason and company for getting us prepared to make these decisions. First, I would address the Egyptian Theater. Certainly, I believe that DeKalb needs to build on its strengths, and one of our strengths is the Egyptian Theater. Certainly, the primary traffic generator downtown, which I'm very supportive of, but my concern would be the future of the Egyptian and how we've been helping the Egyptian over time with capital improvements. With TIF coming offline, I would look for some type of either a ticket charge or percentage on sales of alcohol to manage those future capital needs or to make up for the fact that council or the city may not be investing $100,000 per year into the future. So, how do we accomplish, or how does the Egyptian accomplish, making sure that those needs are taken care of in absence of the $100,000 per year? With regard to the FISC project, was it resolved as far as the distance from the school and serving alcohol? I know that that was a question.
The exact nature of how their license would be structured, we don't know the answer to, but with the regulations that council passed tonight, if there was a setback issue, the city would have the ability to alter that.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, I don't serve the wards downtown, but have heard significant concerns over the last year or so with regard to safety downtown. And certainly, I would encourage consideration of the infrastructure, the fiber, and the cameras, but my caution would be with regard to camera purchases, that we avoid camera purchases that require ongoing maintenance. So, you'll find that as you shop surveillance cameras, that cameras may be purchased outright, and then there are cameras from vendors that require ongoing maintenance. I don't envision us having the general fund to be able to support that ongoing maintenance, so that would certainly be a word of caution with regard to that proposal. But through and through, excellent work. I'm supportive of these proposals, again, with a couple of caveats, and look forward to the work.
Any further discussion? So, it's recommended, and I'm reading this from background material, the city council discuss the alternative options and provide consensus to staff on what items should be prepared for the December 18, 2018 city council special meeting. If no action is recommended, staff will prepare for a distribution of the full amount contemplated as surplus. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And with regard to the considerations before council, this decision relating to TIF is a policy decision. And that's what we're charged with, ladies and gentlemen, or lady and gentlemen. What's the pleasure? Alderman Fanouk.
Well, I think from the comments from my colleagues and of my own, I think we have consensus that we'd like to go ahead and move along these projects, and I'm certainly looking forward to that next week. Jason, I know that means a lot of extra work over the next seven days, but I think it'll have a fruit for all to come for the city in the long run.
Let's hope this sends the right message to our taxing partners, you know? So, okay. Any further comments on this particular item? If not, are there any other items for the good of the cause in terms of new or unfinished business? If not, we have reports, communications. Alderman Jacobson.
Obviously, way back at the start of this meeting, several hours ago, we congratulated NIU on their MAC championship, and I didn't want to hold up the meeting at that point while there were so many people waiting, but I wanted to share an anecdotal story. Obviously, I was out of town, far out of town for the MAC championship and couldn't attend this year after I've been to several. And on the ship I was on, off the coast of Venezuela, we had a sports bar that was generally reserved for a different type of football playing, and it was all soccer games all day, all the time. For those in the sports bar, unfortunately, it was the only place on the ship that had ESPN2, and I made sure to speak to a bartender early in the day to reserve the big screen for the NIU game.
How much did they cost?
So, I went in right about game time and fully dressed in red from head to toe in my NIU gear and got quite a few awkward looks when the TV went from soccer to the NIU game. And I think it's often amusing when people ask, what benefit does the athletic programs have in exposing the university to other people outside of our community or outside of our state? Again, many of the people on the boat were from Texas or Florida, several of them were international down in the sports bar, watching the soccer games from Europe. And they were a bit aggravated, to say the least, through the first half. I don't think they were all that amused to watch the NIU game, but I think they saw from the excitement of our table, of three, four alums at the table watching the game through the course of the second half, that was extremely excited. They gained an appreciation, both for NIU and for MAC football. And again, it was about three to four dozen people, I'd say, total, that we converted, I would say, on that tour. But it was a great game, it was an awesome ending. I think that it became infectious by the end of the game, and it was so exciting to be able to watch a win even that far away from home.
And if any of those folks are potential investors, you'll know where to point them, right, David?
Sure.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouk.
I just want to comment on an event I was involved with last week, WLBK's Freezing for Food Salvation Army Food Pantry. They collected over 13,000 pounds of non-perishable food and diapers and dog food and other items, but also over $8,000 in cash, which, by the Salvation Army's calculation, equivalents out to another 64,000 pounds of food. The generosity of DeKalb and the rest of DeKalb County is just overwhelming, and I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, Bill. Alderman Fagan.
No report.
Alderman Norrico.
I went to the Taste of the Season this Saturday, and it was a really fun event. The food was good, sampled a couple of different kinds of drinks, which led me to be more talkative. But it was a really funny evening, and the weather cooperated, so I'd really encourage folks when, you know, they hear about that, they're like, oh, how many people come out? Not huge crowds. I know there were a number of other activities in the city that evening, but those of us who were there, it was really fun.
Thank you. Alderman Verbig.
No report.
Alderman Favor.
I, too, visited downtown DeKalb on Saturday with our granddaughter and had a carriage ride, and then we walked over and saw Santa Claus, so that was fantastic to be able to come downtown and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. My final comment tonight, as you know, we have a current vacancy on the city council following the resignation of Third Ward Alderman Mike Markwart. Already, a number of citizens have expressed an interest in serving, including at least a couple who I understand have submitted nominating petitions today. What I'm asking for you now, and I'm looking at all of you up here, is some idea of how this mayor should proceed with my duty, it is my duty, to appoint someone to fill this spot through the term ending next spring. Should I name a person whose qualification would enable him or her to do it on a short-term basis? Or would this council feel more comfortable in my naming one of the candidates who have already expressed their desire to run for public office? Think about that, and you'll see the decision is not an easy one. However, I am looking for your input. I have some time to ponder this, but feel it's important enough to want your opinion, and I'd appreciate your providing that. You've always given me opinion on a lot of things, so I would hope that you would on this also. Now, let's go down the row here. Our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas.
Oh, hi. I just, my communication to you is to apologize to you, and that is because when we were talking about the schedule of meetings, I can see now that I made an error in throwing out any specific examples because it totally took the focus off of the general public, which was the bottom line of this. The General Public and Open Meetings Act implications of having meetings that clearly everybody knows are ridiculously long. Now, if that gets fixed, and I understand the end of budget time, it's probably a moot point, but I took this opportunity to bring this up. It probably won't be the last time, because if you shorten the meetings, you not only make the meetings more accessible and convenient to the public, but staff were brought up, you would help staff. I came in this morning a little bit after 7:30, and there were people already working hard here, and some of them are probably here. So, that would, working towards that in whatever way you choose, I'm sure is going to help the general public, the staff, and maybe even you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Dean Frieders.
No report, Mayor.
Ray Munch.
No report.
Gene Lowry.
Thanks, council. I just wanted to let you know that the Target City Police Department partnership that sponsors Heroes and Helpers, we had our Shopping with the Cop, or the Shop with the Cop program this past weekend, yesterday, and it went really well. We serviced over 40 kids. And so, as always, it's good to see kids that might not have an opportunity to really enjoy a Christmas have one. So, first and foremost, thanks to Target for the partnership they give us, and really, we couldn't do it without them, and thanks to those in the community, including the police officers that made monetary donations to make it work.
Thank you, Gene. Our fire chief, Jeff McMaster.
No report.
Our acting finance director, Bob Miller.
No report.
Our community development director, Joellen Charlton.
Thank you. In addition to giving Dean and Jason oxygen as they're trying to keep up with TIF these days, Dan is also very busy on planning and zoning commission. We do have a meeting next Wednesday with three public hearings on that agenda. In Northland Plaza, we need to amend the listing of permitted and special uses, and they're also making a request for an additional pylon sign on Sycamore Road, so we'll have that hearing. Also, the DuPage County Nursing and Rehab Center up on the north end of town is requesting an amendment to their planned development to allow for an expansion to that building. That will be a public hearing. And then, at 1806 Sycamore Road, we need some modifications to a planned development to allow for a vehicle service facility, so busy all the way through the department.
Thank you. Our public works director, Tim Oldman.
No report.
Tim, before you say no report and put a period on that, my take, when I talk to folks about leaves, is that they ought to consider now, with some warmer weather, to bag up those leaves, put them on the curb, and Lake Shore will be picking those up through the end of the month. Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Mark Thorson.
No report.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting of the city council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. Who seconded that?
I did.
Alderman Fagan, I'm sorry. (inaudible).